It is wonderful to be back at in-person town meeting. I'm Cindy Jerome, and it's my privilege to serve as your town moderator, and welcome you back. We don't have our gavel, but Robert's Rules of Order might suffice. The Dummerston Town Meeting is hereby called to order. Please rise if you are able for the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to begin again this year with an invocation that originated in Danville, Vermont. Lots of chattering. People are happy to see their friends and neighbors. Yes. Let's begin. We are gathered together in civil assembly as a community in a tradition that is older than our state itself. We come together to make decisions about our community. As we deliberate, let us advocate for our positions, but not at the expense of others. Let us remember that our neighbors with whom we disagree are good people with hopes and dreams as true and as high as ours. And let us always remember that in the end, caring for each other in this community is of far greater importance than any difference we may have. I am going to ask folks in the back to use quiet voices so we can pay attention to the proceedings. Thank you. Not sure they heard me. Thank you, Phoebe. We have lost many members of our community since we last gathered in March 2020. I'd like to take the time to read their names, and then we'll remember them with a brief moment of silence. Mary Farret, Les Sherman, James Valon, Mark Fumigalli, Frances Mannix, Paul Brown, Dorothy Jones, David Patrickwin, Jude Tyler, Punky Jaquith, Steve Byrd, Sherwood Smith, Lincoln Smart, Jenny Leparali, Lou Leparali, Pat Bacon, Art Eller, Howard Short, Usha Ricky, Grant Anis, Vicky Budasi, Craig McCulloch, Mary Lou Schmidt, Arnold Garland, Larry Cook, Henry Hellus, Norma Smith, Helen Bowen, Donna Saunders, Jean Brown, Lori Reynolds, Zephyr Renaud, Bob Knapp, Ed Fenton, Ruth Perkins, Terri Bolster, Herbie Meckel, Lorraine Walker, John Wilcox, Barbara Covey, Sheila Lawrence, Clarice Short, Joel Dorfler, Robert Nelson, Frasier Moss, Steve Napoli, Doug Hamilton, Gary Bedard, Bob Sherwood, Althea McBane, Doug Crock, Sally Perry, Norbert Stahl, Edgar Dubois, Mary Tyler, Sue Kern, Maria Buscoglia, Lisa Blake, and June Howe. Thank you. Let's acknowledge and thank the scores of people who work to make our town as special as it is. On pages two and three of your report, you'll see tributes to Ruth Barton and Lester Dunkley, to whom the report is dedicated. On pages... On pages four and five, you'll find all our elected and appointed officials. If your name is listed, or if you serve on our road crew, fire department, or rescue squad, please stand. Thank you. On behalf of a grateful town. I'll remind you all of the Adopt a Book program in the school library today. It's been four long years since you could stroll down the hall to adopt a book. There are lots of them, so please adopt a book and consider volunteering to keep this important program going. This meeting is being recorded by Brattleboro Community Television, BCTV. You can watch it later this week on Comcast Channel 1079, or stream it on demand online at brattlebortv.org. For anyone speaking at this meeting, please stand and state your name and speak directly into the microphone so that those in the room and later at home can hear you. Thank you. We have three able assistants today running the microphone to speakers: Gretchen Green, Phoebe Wagner, and Mabel Wampler. Thank you. Please put your cell phones on vibrate. In order to speak at town meeting, you must be a registered Dummerston voter. It's our tradition to make an exception for those who represent Dummerston in the State House. Accordingly, if there's no objection, I will give the privilege of speaking to our legislators and any other elected state officials who stop by so that they may present their reports and answer your questions. You also must be a registered Dummerston voter to vote on any issue today. If you have difficulty standing, you have the option of holding up a card. There are two of those cards on the back table. If you need one of them, please raise your hands now, and I'll ask one of the mic runners to pick up a card and deliver it to you. All right, I'm not seeing any hands. Please... Okay, if there's no objection, we will break for lunch around noon. It is provided by the good folks at The Grange, headed by Larry Lynch Jr. and Sally May. Today's menu is sandwiches, soup, and dessert. And the cost is $6 for adults and $4 for children. I'm going to try to remember. Please feel free to remind me if we forget that around 11 o'clock, we're going to ask for a show of hands of how many people will be taking lunch so they don't make too many sandwiches. And if they do, I'm sure some of you would love to buy them and take them home after the meeting. There are no errors in the town report, and it's a beauty, as is the views of Dummerston that came out a couple of weeks ago. Thank you. We have talented people coming, creating those pieces for us, and we thank them. Lori Frichette, our town clerk, has prepared a helpful summary of the rules of town meeting. Copies are on the table in the back of the room, and I encourage you to familiarize yourself with it if you're a Robert's Rules of Order geek like me. A few highlights, Robert's Rules of Order, governed town meeting. To speak, raise your hand. When I call on you, wait for the microphone and then state your name. Even if you have a commanding voice, please wait for the microphone so that people watching you later online can hear you. Each voter may speak twice to each motion. I will not call on you a second time unless everyone else who wishes to speak has spoken once. Town officials with expertise on a question may provide information neutrally without it counting as one of their two times. I ask the members of our Board of Civil Authority to be ready to be... To count if a division of the House is requested, or if there's a paper ballot. All motions and remarks should be addressed to the moderator, that's me. This includes when you are asking or answering a question. Under Robert's Rules of Order, there are no conversations between members of the body, that's you. My job is to help you, the voters, accomplish your will. If you're not sure how to do something, just ask me. And if I'm not sure, I have the resources to look it up. And now we begin. You will find the warning on page 78 of your town report. Page 76 shows the minutes from last year. So with gratitude to Zeke for starting a tradition, I'll say, open your hymnals to page 78. Exactly. Article 1 refers to the election of town officers by Australian ballot, and so requires no action by this body. Just remember to vote before you go. Article 2, shall the voters accept the auditor's report of the town accounts? Maria. Dan, are you here? Dan? Dan, who works in the school? We can't get the mic over to the end of the table, there.
Okay. That's what happens when you don't do town meeting for a bunch of years. We're going to last so you guys.
It has been four years. We'll probably have a few quirks today. Maria, would you like to make a motion?
I move that we accept the auditor's report of the town accounts.
Is there a second? Second from Ruth Barton. It has been moved and seconded that we accept the auditor's report of the town accounts. Is there any discussion? You are voting to accept the auditor's report of the town accounts. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and we have accepted the auditor's report of the town accounts. Article 3, shall the voters authorize the select board to appoint a receiver of delinquent taxes? Is there a motion?
I move that we authorize the select board to appoint a receiver of delinquent taxes.
Is there a second? Harold seconds. Thank you, Harold. It has been moved and seconded that we authorize the select board to appoint a receiver of delinquent taxes. Is there discussion or debate? You are ready for the question. All those in favor of authorizing the select board to appoint a receiver of delinquent taxes signify by saying aye. All opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. And the select board is so authorized. Article 4, shall the voters authorize raising the sum of $110,000 through taxes and appropriate set amount to the capital fund for future capital needs?
I move that we raise the sum of $110,000 through taxes and appropriate set amounts to the capital fund for future capital needs.
Is there a second? Second from Ruth Barton. Thank you. It has been moved and seconded that we raise the sum of $110,000 through taxes and appropriate set amount to the capital fund for future needs. Todd, would you like to explain this?
Certainly. Let me get to the right page. All right, so capital funds for this year at $110,000. Oh, yes, page 38 in your town report. So as you can see, we plan out a number of years in advance, looking at requirements that we're going to have. Can you hear me, Paul? So... Yep. So if you look in the page 38, you'll see the capital fund expenditures that we've looked at between now and, for instance, 2034. For this year, it's $110,000 primarily for the Kubota tractor, which you'll see in the 24-25 line, or column as the case may be, which then adds to our beginning balance of $202,000, and will end the year with $203,000 in the capital fund. So we had a plan to maintain a certain base number in the capital fund every year, and so the $85,000 expenditure with $110,000 in taxes keeps us at that number. And that's the only major expenditure this year. But as you see, starting next year, there'll be additional expenditures that will come up.
Thank you. Any discussion or debate? Questions? Are you ready for the question? It has been moved and seconded that we raise the sum of $110,000 through taxes and appropriate set amount to the capital fund for future capital needs. All in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and you have funded your capital fund. Article 5, shall the voters approve... I'm sorry, shall the voters authorize the purchase of a Kubota tractor at a price not to exceed $85,000 and to pay for said purchase from the capital fund?
Madam Moderator, I move that we authorize the purchase of a Kubota tractor at the price not to exceed $85,000 and to pay for said purchase from the capital fund.
Is there a second? Second from Zeke. Thank you. It has been moved and seconded that we authorize the purchase of a Kubota tractor at a price not to exceed $85,000 and to pay for said purchase from the capital fund. I have been informed that Lee is making some smart decisions about the best tractor for the town at the best price, and it may not end up being a Kubota tractor. It may end up being a John Deere tractor, or who knows what. So I'm going to entertain a friendly amendment that we drop the word Kubota from this motion. We had to move it exactly as warned in the article, but we can now drop the word Kubota and give Lee the freedom to make the best choice on behalf of the town. Would anyone like to move that we drop the word Kubota? Jerrilyn? Motion. Very good. Is there a second to Jerrilyn's? We've got a second in the back. Leon Dunbar. Thank you, neighbor. So the motion has been... Well, I should ask you all if you agree to that. All in favor of the motion, and I'm not even going to ask for debate on that one, to drop the word Kubota from the motion? I'm sorry?
Yes.
Yes. The vote is amending the original motion to drop the word Kubota. All in favor of doing so indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? No. No diehard Kubota fans? Great. Lee will do what's best for the town. And now we have amended that, and we are considering the new amended motion on the floor, which is that we authorize the purchase of a tractor at a price not to exceed $85,000 and to pay for said purchase from the capital fund. Do you want to make any explanation, Louis? Use your microphone.
So Lee has gone out and checked prices between Kubota, John Deere, and I believe maybe another one other place. And John Deere seems to be much better value at quite a bit cheaper price than the $85,000. We don't want to change the $85,000. That will go back to the capital fund if it's not spent. But as we saw with the fire truck, until you actually have that purchase price, the price can continue to go up. So right now, it's going to be probably right around $70,000 for the new tractor. And it's... The one he's looking at is a John Deere. It's 75 horsepower John Deere. So, any questions?
Any questions? Any debate? Yes, Jody. Mic runner?
This is on the main motion, correct?
Yes.
I'd like to say something that may not be popular with most people. When we first moved here 53 years ago, our road was plowed and other roads were plowed with a pickup truck. And in 50-plus years, everything keeps getting larger and larger and larger. I'd like to ask the road crew and the select board to consider not keeping this up, getting larger and larger and larger. It's not only more expensive, it does a lot of damage to the sides of the road. And money-wise, it just seems like it's getting too much. So I'm not making any motion or anything, and I know Lee does everything to try to save money, but I'd like to not get huge. We're not Brattleboro, we're not Montpelier or Burlington, we're Dummerston. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
I'm Barbara Evans, and this is kind of a picky comment, but a bunch of years ago, we were tractor shopping, and John Deere has always been the most wonderful, green and yellow, you know. Everybody knows about John Deere. And the tractors we looked at, John Deere hadn't kept up. And I know the company went through some crisis. And I guess I'm just suggesting that Lee really look into whether this tractor does what he wants it to do in the way that he wants it to do. What we found is that you couldn't get on it at all. You know, it had some strange things that hadn't been updated. So we ended up with a Kubota, for what it's worth. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Gavi Kessler. I just have a quick question, which is, what do we actually use the tractor for?
Who would like to answer that? Louis?
We... Louis White, we use the tractor for blowing leaves off the side of the road, raking the roads after the grader has gone by. If you saw, yesterday, we were using it to rake the... Where the mud was moved off to the side, we were pushing it back in. So we use that for that. And for the mowing of the road sides.
Anyone else? Seeing no hands, the motion on the floor is to authorize the purchase of a tractor at a price not to exceed $85,000 and to pay for said purchase from the capital fund. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. Article 6, shall the voters approve total general fund expenditures of $585,419, of which $449,984 shall be raised by taxes and $135,435 by non-tax revenues for the period of July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2025. Is there a motion?
Yes, I move that we approve total general fund expenditures of $585,419, of which $449,984 shall be raised by taxes and $135,435 by non-tax revenues for the period of July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2025.
Is there a second? Louis has seconded. I'm going to invite Zeke to explain this.
All right. Can you hear me okay?
No.
No. Is this on? Okay, let me turn up my hearing aids and see if that helps. All right, is this any better? Yes, all right. Well, let's start out by turning to page 29. And on page 29, everyone there yet? I should ask you, everyone's there yet? You'll see the summary of municipal taxes, and you can see what we voted on in 2024 fiscal year and what we're proposing now in your town report. So you're seeing increase this year of 18.82%. So if we vote all the articles and budgets as they are in the town report, we'll be looking at an 18.82% increase over the municipal taxes of last year. If we make any cuts to line items, that will go down. If we increase any line items, that 18.82 will go up. So that's just to preface my remarks. And if we go back to page 33. Yeah, the general fund. And we'll go down. I'll give a brief summary and go down the list. If you have questions, you may ask our moderator, and she'll direct the question to the appropriate person. Starting out, select board salaries, we're keeping the same. I'm not going to go down every single item. But if we want to make this meeting last until at least lunchtime, maybe I should, you know, slow down and talk a little slower. We have clerical wages for the select board assistant, but we haven't had an official select board clerical worker for a number of years. So that position, if you're looking for a little spare change and a good time on Wednesday nights, that would be, you know, a great option to pursue, a career goal. Maria has taken up the slack of taking minutes and preparing our worksheets for the budget, so she has done more and above the requirements of an active select board member. Let's see. You can see no real big changes until we get down to FICA and Medicare. We're proposing some increases in wages this year, which will affect the Social Security and Medicare contributions the town makes. We have health reimbursement account, that's HRA. That's part of our health plan for town employees. Five individuals get health insurance through the town. They have an HSA that the town contributes to. And if they go over that HSA amount that they have and have out-of-pocket expenses, then that HRA is there to help cover those costs, out-of-pocket costs. So our current balance of that is $15,376. We like to have it up at around $20,000. And that's just in case... And that's just in case all five of our employees needed to use this program at the same time. That's never happened. So you know, this is, just between you and me, this is, might be an area where we could shave that $5,000 down just a little bit. But that's, you know, confidentially between you and me. You know, our insurance, different programs that we have, some go up, some go down every year. But the property owner's policy has gone up a little bit. Now, if we go down to the next administration, town clerk wages, you'll see that's gone up. We had proposed a 10% increase in wages for, let's see. Our administrative employees and officers, you'll see that that $39,897 is more than a 10% increase. But because there's a general election, a presidential election coming on, the state primaries in August, that's a lot of, many more hours than we're currently budgeted for. So Lori asked that we increase her hours to cover those elections, so. The treasurer, tax collector, we increased that by 10%. I think later on, we'll ask Charlotte to stand up and take a bow. But Charlotte has been our tax collector for, since 2016. And she did a fabulous job in keeping track of our FEMA expenses and getting FEMA to reimburse us for the costs that we incurred after the July 29, 2021 storm. So, thanks to Charlotte for doing that. And being there to answer any questions when I call her and ask for a number. Okay, let's see. Our elections operating supplies have gone up a little. And let's see, printing and postage of the town report has gone up. There's always a little bit of a debate, how much we should invest in the hard copies of the town report and how much of it should be online, or how much should we rely to online. For the time being, we're still printing these, as you can see. Listers have gone up by 10%. Going down to planning and zoning, I don't see any questions yet. But our zoning administrator wages have gone up, or we're proposing they go up 10%. And let's see, municipal building. Not much change there. Cost of janitorial services has gone up, as has lawn care. Everyone doing okay so far? Great. Public safety, we have the sheriff's department contract. I think that's for 24 hours a month, and I believe it's $63 an hour. Rescue, they provide the ambulance service for residents. And the Wyndham County Humane Society takes care of our stray animals. And the sheriff's department also takes care of animal control. Wayne Emery and I had been Dumerson's volunteer animal control officers for a number of years. And finally turned in our leashes a few, couple of years ago. And the sheriff's department has been doing a very professional job in that department. You know, I used to, as the animal control officer, used to sometimes show up on people's front doorstep and knock, and the people inside would actually call the sheriff. So having someone other than a garden gnome show up is, seems to be more effective. Fire department. We had, just as a preface, we had a series of long discussions with members of the volunteer fire department. They were back and forth and at times frustrating. But at the very end, I think we came to good accord and understanding. And I think we have the framework for improved budgeting and working together in the future. We'll start earlier, or whoever is on the select board next year, we'll start earlier in the process. And I think it will be a good result. We're proposing $50,000 in operating expenses and $26 towards capital expenditures by the fire department. This is on top of $43,428 that we allocated to the fire department through the ARPA funds this past year. The fire department, not surprisingly, wanted more. But this, we felt, when we were working with a proposed 49% increase in the budget, we tried to find places where we could cut. And we felt that this was a place where we had to cut some costs. We felt the fire department could, had the resources to cover the shortfall that would arise from $50,000, a $50,000 town contribution. I think in future years, I think most people recognize that asking the volunteer fire department people to do the amount of training that's now required, plus do all the fundraising, substantial amount of fundraising, is just adding a little too much. And we might want the town to take over more of the costs that they usually raise through fundraising. So. Under emergency management, we are proposing $4,600. I believe Marty Ferret has been our emergency management director for the past few years and done a great job. But he is turning in his badge for that. And so anyone who would like to, is interested in becoming the emergency management director, they should speak with a select board member. You could become the select board clerical worker and the emergency management director and make some pretty good money here, hobbling them together. Waste collection, we level funded. Health and welfare, there's been a very modest increase in that amount. Cemeteries, the $7,625 mostly goes to lawn care, cutting the lawn. Takes quite a bit of effort to mow around all those stones, not an easy task. Recreation board, they're sort of self-funding. They did get a little over $6,000 from the ARPA fund. And you could see where ARPA money went on page 17. But they, their new ice rink and some infrastructure and equipment were paid by some ARPA funds that we had. The community center has been doing a lot of work on the community center. They have a new board of directors as of this past June, I believe. And we had a building inspector go through the whole building and give us a 100-page report on what needed to be done. And those new directors have been assiduously going through the list and making those improvements. And so it's quite a different building than it was a year ago. It's actually pretty pleasant. And they are not asking for any funds. The library, $22,040. They were asking for more. We did increase their budget so they could possibly open for more hours. And our hope was they would, with more hours, they would be able to see, did patronage increase with more hours. And then, you know, we could have the discussion next year on some of the other increases they wanted. But that was our proposal for this year. Under conservation, pretty much the conservation commission, asking for $1,000. They do a wonderful programming and newsletter for the town. And Farmland Protection Fund, I know most of you aren't interested in that one, but we are proposing, or in this report, we proposed $5,000. The current balance of the Farmland Protection Fund is $50,455,000. $450,000, let's see, let me start again. The current balance is $50,455.67. We think that's enough for any upcoming projects or conservation projects that they have. In the 20 years that the program's been running, it's been used twice. There was 15,000 that went to the bunker farm project, and then 18,000 that went to the Dumerson Station project. This past year, not using any funds from this, from the town, the Farmland Protection Committee helped conserve the farmland at the Howe Farm down at the south end of town. So we think that $50,000 would be adequate, even if we had two projects, major projects come up in the coming year, $50,000 would be enough. So, in fact, I would think this would be, and I'll make an amendment at some point, that we can zero this out for this year. And in future years, Todd might want to explain, he's the one who came up with this brilliant idea of replenishing it in the future. Do you want to speak to that?
Why don't you, you're so close to the end, why don't you finish?
Okay.
And then I'm gonna-
All right, I'm gonna race right through. So, okay, going on. County tax, that pays for the, what's that called? Superior court cost and some aspects of the sheriff's department. And this one's always interesting, the miscellaneous, bank charges, historical society of Wyndham County, Memorial Day, miscellaneous and sevens. Total miscellaneous is $1,890. So that's the general fund budget in a nutshell.
Isha, I saw your hand.
Isha Williams, Zeke just said that they spent nothing on the Howe Farm. And that was something we should celebrate, by the way, the Howe Farm was protected last year. That's on the end of Old Ferry Road on the Connecticut River, right near the Brattleboro Town Line. That was the third farm this fund has protected. In fact, the town spent $4,000 on an appraisal for that land from the Farmland Protection Fund. And also, I think, hopefully, someone from the Farmland Committee will want to speak to this, but I think, and our moderator, Zeke just said he's going to zero out the $5,000 that was in the town budget. The town budget currently says there's $5,000 going to zero. The committee requested $7,000 this year. And I believe the committee is understanding they should speak for themselves, but they were getting $5,000. And I think Zeke just said that's getting zeroed out, is that correct?
I think Zeke was talking about a recommendation for the future. Only the voters, only the body can zero out that line.
So that's it. So I just wanted to correct the fact that someone said, Zeke said there is nothing spent on the Howe Farm. There's $4,000 spent on that?
$3,500, Zeke is agreeing that something was spent. He stands corrected, he says. Okay. Other questions on what Zeke has just presented? Questions, comments, debate? Jody.
Thank you, Jody Normandou. I guess mine are mainly comments. It's a huge, 10% for our workers is a huge increase at one time. I had hoped that they would have gone, every year in the past, they would have gone up some and not put it all on one year. After that, I hoped that they would have at least separated it. I think our workers need the appropriate amount of pay for them. I don't want to diss any of the payment that the town offices get or the road crew get. But I would hope in the future that it would be continual every year and not one big lump. The other thing I wanted just to ask the select board, it would be, I would like it better if every category, like the road crew, the town office or whatever, had the FICA, the health, all the benefits underneath that category, so we know what that category represents. I understand from the public hearing that it all goes in one spot, I think, under administration. But I would appreciate it if we could know what all the benefits everybody's getting as well as their pay. And we can't see that in this budget. Thank you.
Any other questions, debate? Yes, Dan?
Hi, I'm Dan Normando. Question for the select board. It appears to me, if I'm reading it correctly, but please respond to, it seems like there's a balance in the ARPA funds. I'd like to know what that is, what the deadline is for using it or losing it, what the plan is for using it if there is a deadline. Thank you.
The balance right now, yep, the balance right now is about $14,700, and it has to be allocated by the end of this year and spent by the end of 2026.
Yeah, Dan, I'm not sure your whole question was answered.
Right. Sorry. Looking on page 17, this is where my confusion is. Maybe there was some spent, I guess, between June 30 of last year, but it said the balance was 332, and then we're proposing spending 238. So there must have been something spent, maybe in the last six months?
Yes, we've allocated quite a bit to the community center, and there's going to be a structures project for the highway department on Park Lawton Road, which was about $179,000.
Dan, I'm gonna say no, but I am going to ask Maria to, part of Dan's original question was, are there any plans for that remaining $14,700?
There is some that will be allocated, most likely, to the highway garage for new lighting at the highway garage.
All right, anyone else who hasn't spoken to this question, who would like to speak? I see a hand in the back row.
I'm Frances Herbert, and thank you all so much for your many hours of planning over the years. I would like to suggest that perhaps you use this mic instead of the one you're using, because it's really difficult to hear you. And I could hear all the speakers on the floor better than I could hear any of you.
Dan's moving into ear. So you're not hearing me well? You can hear me, but you can't hear people down below here as well.
Check, 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 check. Is that better? It's got to be really close to our mouths. We'll pay attention to that. Louder, okay. We'll do it.
Danny?
Yeah, Dennis, here. I'd like to just follow up on what Jody had to say. Maybe Maria can correct me on this, but I did a- Maybe Maria can correct me on this, but I did a, the, a little thing on showing what the benefit package, and I think we treat our town employees pretty good with the benefit package. I took a $40,000 salary, and then I added the benefit package, and it adds about $18,000 to that salary. And I think that's really a nice benefit package. So, just to get that information out, I agree. Thank you.
Anyone else? Is there anyone else who would like to speak first? Jody, I'll call on you second. Go ahead.
I would just like to thank the select board for the use of the ARPA fund that they gave to the Dummerston Historical Society. It was very well received, and we really do appreciate it. Normally, the town does not support the historical society, we support it ourselves. So, some of the big projects are costly for the donations that we get. I would also encourage anybody to join the historical society both monetarily, and we need volunteers all the time. Thank you.
I see no other hands. The motion on the floor is that we approve general fund expenditures of $585,419, of which $449,984 shall be raised by taxes and $135,435 by non-tax revenues for the period of July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2025. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and you have passed your general fund budget. Zeke, I invite you to come up and present the highway fund budget.
I move, I move that we approve total highway fund expenditures of $711,000, or $711,450, of which $574,950 shall be raised by taxes and $136,500 by non-tax revenues for the period July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2025.
Is there a second? Charlotte seconds. It has been moved and seconded that we approve total highway fund expenditures of $711,450, of which $574,950 shall be raised by taxes and $136,500 by non-tax revenues for the period of July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2025. I'll ask Zeke to present this budget.
All right. If you'll pay, turn to page 30, to the highway budget. Everybody there? You'll see the big increase, about $45,125 going into wages. Part of this big wage jump is due to the select board not keeping up with wage increases and cost of living increases. Back in 20, when we were doing the 2021 budget, we'd been told, I'd been told by a state epidemiologist that we could expect one-third of you to be dead and most of you to be out of work. That's while we were making the budget. So, we tried to level fund that year, we level funded wages, and it turns out that not all of you got the same information that I did. And so, we didn't have the catastrophe that we were planning for or anticipating. But the following year, we didn't, we did cost of living increase, but we didn't make up for what we should have done when we skipped and level funded the previous year. And then we haven't caught up. There was 8% cost of living increase at one point, but we did 4%, I believe. So, we fell behind. And this was brought to my attention particularly, over the summer, I saw in the newspaper that Halifax was advertising a starting wage of $25 for their road crew. And I believe we had a road crew member who'd been with us for three years who wasn't even making $20, $20 an hour. So, we felt like we had to really up our game here. And some suggested we do it incrementally over a couple of years, but that would be, in my opinion, not a very good idea, because why, why would someone wait three years to get a pay increase that would be equal to something that they might be able to get if they went tomorrow, just 10 minutes more over to Putney and joined their road crew? So, with, let's see, like the rest of the town, our road crew tends to be generally in the upper age bracket, and we anticipate, you know, some people eventually retiring, which case we'll have to advertise for new people unless our backup plan is to assign everyone to shovel their, you know, their front, their frontage each, after each snowstorm. So, if we have to advertise for new road crew members and the, the starting pay is below what other towns are offering, then we maybe have a hard time getting qualified road crew members. Our, the people we have on our road crew are very professional, very well skilled. It's nice to have smart people running your big trucks, and I feel we have that now. If we fall behind, you could have people like me, you know, applying to be on the road crew, and then, you know, you're gonna be in trouble. So...
I have this, I need to...
Oh, wait, hold on. Why?
Because we have our state treasurer, our state senator, our state business.
Gee, we were on such a roll. You know, we were gonna, I was gonna get you out of here before lunch, but I guess I talked too much.
No, you don't.
Do you wanna, do you wanna just, I'll zip through the rest?
Really?
Yeah. Okay, okay, so that's the, my preamble. The rest of the budget, you know, salt doesn't get put on the dirt roads, just on the paved roads. Let's see, road line painting, you know, when Janet Avery stood up, you know, 10 or 12 years ago asking about painting the white lines, I thought, pshaw, you know, who needs white lines on the side of the road? But now it's elderly gentlemen, you know, driving back from meetings at the community center at night. I have come to appreciate the white lines on the side of the road. And, let's see, so, altogether, it's about a 49% increase over the road budget of last year. So, with no further ado... Excuse me? Oh, no, you're right, you're right. I'm sorry, what am I saying? Why did I come up with that figure?
49,000.
49,000.
What?
49,000.
49,000. Did I say, what did I say?
49%.
Oh, wow, okay. Anyone want the 45%? Okay, we're going with the 45,000, 49,000. Okay.
My apologies for interrupting Zeke, and my apologies for interrupting the questions that you might have. I should have attended to this before we started this article. We have in the back of the room Mike Murawiki, our representative to the House, Nader Hashim, our senator, and we also have Michael Pieschek, who is our state treasurer and is from Brattleboro, so we're lucky he came by today. So, I'd like, because they have other places to go, I'd like to call them up. Who would like to come first? Who's got the most places to go to? Nader, I know you've been waiting for a while, you wanna be first? And Mike Pieschek second?
It is good to be here, and thank you for giving me a few moments here to speak about some of the work that we've been doing. Very quick note, I do still live here in Dummerston, just so you all know. If you happen to see me driving a car with New Hampshire plates, I'm just getting some repairs on my old car and borrowing a family member, so just want, just want you all to know that. So, I, I figured I'll just spend five or 10 minutes talking about some of the bills that I've been working on in both of my committees. So, as a senator, I serve on two committees. I serve as the vice chair of the Judiciary Committee, and in the afternoon, I serve as a member of the Education Committee. And outside of these standing committees, I also serve on the Judicial Nominating Board, which is the entity that performs the, the hiring process essentially for judges and other judicial and quasi-judicial positions before the names are sent to the governor. Now, my priorities in the Judiciary Committee have been primarily focused on improving the efficiency of different procedures in different court hearings while also addressing capacity issues with staffing. I've also worked on a number of bills that focus on protecting victims of violent crimes. Specifically, some of those bills include removing the requirement that victims of violent felonies, such as aggravated domestic assault, testify in front of the person who assaulted them in pre-trial hold without bail hearings. This is a bill that protects both victims and also improves public safety. I've also worked on and passed a bill that removes the requirement for children who are victims of cruelty to a child to testify in front of their abuser. Under current law, we do not require child victims of sexual assault to testify, and now this protection extend, extends to children who are victims of physical abuse as well. And another large topic of conversation regarding the judiciary that we heard from the very beginning of the session has to do with the significant backlog in cases, which is also tied to public safety. And a quick, very quick anecdote about this backlog. So, my former career, in, in 2017, I helped investigate a non-violent felony, and I'm not gonna provide any identifying information, but that was 2017. That case was resolved about two months ago. And the, the irony in it is that I had, actually had to skip a hearing in the legislature to come back down and testify in this case, and that hearing was about the backlog. So, addressing the backlog involves multiple steps, some of which are technical, others of which involve increasing workload capacity. And at the current rate in which we resolve cases, our state will be out of the backlog within 20 to 30 years. So, in order to help address this and to ensure we're upholding Vermonters' rights to a speedy trial, our committee recently passed a bill which creates three new judge positions. One of these positions will also be used to start a statewide drug docket, which I believe will also help with the opioid crisis. And so, moving on to education, my, my work with education, I, I try to focus both on the short-term and the long-term impacts, not just on kids, but also the impacts on our teachers, staff, and families as well. One of the bills for me that's become a top priority involves in making, involves making improvements to the governance and logistics of career technical education centers, also known as CTEs. These are places where kids can go to learn a trade or skill that will not only come in handy, but almost guarantee that they'll be able to find employment in one of the many trade careers that are lacking personnel. And some of the changes that we've worked on include changing the funding mechanisms so that the budget will go through AOE and take into consideration the average of the past year of tuition rather than the last three years. Now, that's getting more into the weeds of the bill, but it really is just focusing on the issues related to CTEs not getting the adequate funding that they, that they need in order to run their programs. And some of the other changes also include establishing partnerships between CTEs and state colleges. And there's two main reasons for this. Many CTEs are at capacity for physical space, and for example, we heard testimony from one director that they had to turn away 200 students who wanted to enroll in different programs to learn technical skills. And partnering with these state colleges will allow for, will allow for usage of their facilities without putting a burden to construct and expand capacity at the CTE school itself. The other benefit to it is the fact that these high school students will also be able to transfer credits from the CTE to technical colleges, which will help them more quickly and, and affordably gain higher certifications in, in their degrees. Now, another less complicated bill that I've worked on involves supporting refugees and their continuing education. Right now, as I'm sure folks know, we have a growing refugee population in Brattleboro, and there is, there, there are these grants that VSAC provides, they're, they're known as advancement grants. They provide education for non-degree related classes, so driving classes, English classes. And there were some issues with the residency requirements that were kind of at odds with the fact that, you know, folks are fleeing their home countries to come here or other parts of the country and, you know, trying to learn these skills, but they're, they're not able to access these grants. So, with the suggestion of VSAC and SIT and a number of Afghan refugees who I spoke with, we spent a lot of time working on this bill, and it recently passed out of committee with thankfully bipartisan unanimous support, and I'll be, that'll be the first bill that I report on the day I get back on Tuesday of next week. So, we've also worked on a series of other bills related to improving literacy, changing the state school board composition, and creating stronger protections against sexual assault on our college campuses. And just a quick note on literacy, scores have been declining nationwide, but compared to the rest of the, compared to the rest of the country, Vermont does remain above average in literacy scores. But among our regional neighbors here in New England, we're about in the middle of the pack. So, everything that I've described so far is really a small fraction of all the work that we've been doing. And also, I can't forget to state that Senator Harrison does send her regrets that she wasn't able to make it here. As we were planning, we decided it would be best to kind of separate and go to different towns so we can cover as much area as possible. But with all that being said, it's, it's been a really, it's been a challenging session so far, but it's also, I mean, this is really one of the best jobs I've ever had, I've ever had, and I'm very grateful for the opportunity to serve folks up in Montpelier. So, thank you all for having me, and thank you again for the invitation to come and speak, and I'll pass it off to whomever is next. Thank you.
Any questions for Nader? Jody?
Hi, Nader.
Hello.
Could you please get the legislature to do something about this mess of educational funding every term? It does one thing after another, and it only gets worse for our area and for smaller school areas. So, and you know, you've heard from me, maybe keep your fingers out of it or do something better.
Yep, so, there, yes, the, when it comes to taxes, the, that bag behind me has a whole bunch of literature about taxes, and I'm actually happy to provide you with a copy of a few things if you'd like, but the, the issue related to property taxes is, I'm not one to exaggerate, but the taxes are something that keep me up at night. You know, the, there are a lot of challenges that are, you know, there are some things that are in our control, but there are also a number of things that aren't in our control. And, you know, I'm talking about nationwide inflation, the increase in health insurance costs, the, the ending of federal money, and there are going to be a lot of really challenging conversations over the next couple of years as to what we can and have to provide for education. Education is the only government service that is considered a constitutional right, and as we, oh, and, and the other challenging piece of this... And as we, and the other challenging piece of this also has to do with school construction and capital costs. And in that area, there's, there really isn't any way to sugarcoat it. There's not much good news when it comes to school construction. And, and I don't say that to sound alarmist in any way, but I think that as towns and school boards are looking at their budgets over the next several years, it's, I think, important to have really the facts as to the numbers. And after we got the report back from the School Construction Task Force, it's my understanding that over the next 21 years, there's a total of around $6 billion in capital construction costs that need to be made in order to bring schools across the state up to code. And if I'm, well, I don't want to speculate. I can't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but $6 billion was the number that I saw for the entirety of the construction cost. So, and the last thing that I'll note is, you know, the Education Committee itself is not the committee that handles the taxes itself. It's a Senate Finance Committee. But there's obviously a very strong link between education and property taxes. And so outside of my two committees, I have been spending a lot of time trying to demystify property taxes in Vermont. And I'll conclude my statement by saying this. You know, when we were voting on H850, we got almost unanimous bipartisan support. There was one no vote. But there was also a veteran senator who stood up and said, "I challenge any of you senators to go to your town meetings and accurately explain property taxes to your town." And I'm not taking up that challenge, and I don't think any other senator did agree to take up that challenge. But it's extremely complex, and there are a lot of challenges ahead of us. Thank you.
Oh, did you have a question?
There's a couple of them.
Microphone, please. Phoebe? Microphone, please. Phoebe?
Hello? Thank you, Nodder. Just to follow up on Jody's comment slash, oh, I'm sorry, Eric Lineback. To follow up on Jody's comment question, I'd like to just put out there to you and Mike and anyone else who's listening. Taxes are getting a bit out of control. I understand there's a lot of costs that are, as you state, out of your control. But there's a lot of things that you can do to cut spending. And I don't know what the right things are to cut, but Vermont's one of the most expensive states to live in, in this entire country. And we always talk about needing to attract people and businesses to come here to the state, keeping people here in the state from leaving. And the cost of living is, you know, a big part of that. So I really would implore you to find ways to cut spending. Put money into the things that are important and stop wasting money on a lot of the things that may or may not be important, but that aren't, you know, where money is not spent efficiently. So that's just a comment. Thank you.
Thank you, and your comment is well noted. And I do agree that there certainly are things that are in our control. I hope I didn't misrepresent by saying this is, none of this is in our control. There are things that we can do, and there are also things that we can't do. And, you know, it's, yeah, it's, they're, I'll just briefly say that, you know, trying to wiggle around the formula for property taxes is not always going to be the right move forward. Rather, I think we also have to look at the underlying challenges, which is, or the underlying issue, which is our population and our economy, and making sure that we have a larger and expanding tax pool so that we can provide these services, like education, without having to raise taxes. But that's, there's a lot to unpack there in the interest of time. I do want to make sure Representative Marwicke gets a chance, as well as our treasurer. So thank you.
One more in the back?
Yeah, I'll try to keep this quick. I'm Annalisa Fedorik. You mentioned something about sexual assault and reducing it on college campuses. I want to, if this is still on. Oh, I want to know exactly what you guys were doing and how, what the effect was.
Sure, so the bill number is S120, and I have a copy of it with me if you'd like to read it. Basically, it is requiring institutions of higher education to sign memorandums of understanding with the, with local advocates who provide access to resources for victims of sexual assault. There's also an immunity clause for, let's say somebody is 20 years old, they're at a party, they've been drinking, but they were also sexually assaulted. They can go report that without having to fear consequence of having consumed alcohol under age. And they can still report what happened to them. And there was a third part of that bill that I'm blanking on at the moment, but I do have it, and I can provide that to you as I'm walking out, if that works for you. Thank you.
Mike Marwicke assures me he won't stand between us and our lunch count. Please raise your hand if you plan on buying lunch today. Keep your hand raised until Alex or Todd are beyond you.
Paper ballot, paper ballot.
Zeke is calling for a paper ballot. I will decline that suggestion. You do have some people up front, too. And then if you can report your total numbers to the kitchen right away, thanks. Okay, here comes Mike Marwicke.
Good morning. And thank you for the opportunity to report on our work, and thank you for the opportunity to serve you in Montpelier. It's great to be back home. It's great to be here and see lots of familiar faces. I enjoy serving. I feel like we're doing some good work. But the hard part is being away from home and being away from family, friends. One of the things about town meeting I like is we get to come back and see you familiar faces. You don't have to go far these days to hear gloom and doom. And I am not going there. Let other people do that. There's enough of that to go around. I think we're doing some good work. And by the time we get done, I hope a lot of the questions that come up here and in other places will be answered. And, you know, I know there's a lot of concerns about education and how do we afford it. And one of the things I really appreciate it is how much this area supports education. We know children are the future, and we know that there are costs associated with education. And I know that our district board has been working hard. And my understanding is they came in with a budget about, with about a 3% increase. But just north of us, when the Northeast District came in at about 3%. And as I'm looking around, I'm seeing budgets start to come in, and I'm wondering where that number of 20% came from. It's a little bit disingenuous to put a number out like that and scare people. And I want to wait till we get all the numbers to come in. But what I want to say is, the legislature is going to work to make sure we have quality education opportunities for our children at something we can afford. We're going to work hard to make sure that our support for education is not something that makes living here a challenge. So let's stay tuned on that one. Now, we're working to pass and maintain a fiscally responsible state budget that reflects our values and supports Vermonters in all 14 counties. We're working on the complex and interconnected challenges of housing and workforce development. And it's challenging because we have one of the lowest unemployment rates in the country. And yet, we have about 12,000 jobs right now in Vermont that are going because we don't have workers for them. Now, we're looking to pass inclusive strategies to combat climate change and transition to a sustainable way of life as we implement a plan to achieve emissions reductions required in the Global Warming Solutions Act, an act which I will note that we passed over the veto of the governor. The one bill we're working on this year is the Renewable Energy Standards Bill, to get more of our energy from renewable sources. Now, the effects of this could be equal to taking 160,000 cars off the road. Now, this is looking ahead quite a bit. But the reason we want to focus on that is 40% of our carbon footprint in Vermont is transportation. Now, we want to make sure that as we do that, we do it in a way that's equitable for everyone. And as with heating, what I have found, I used to heat with wood, five cords a year. Now, as I started to get a little older, I thought, well, five cords is a lot to put up every year. So I started buying some wood. Wood's about $300 a cord now. Using five cords, that's about $1,500 a season. So I put in a heat pump. I'm spending about $900 a year now to heat my house. It's not only cleaner, it's cheaper. So the idea that it's harder for people to change is not supported by the reality that it's going to cost a lot cheaper. And to buy this, there are subsidies available. So look at Green Mountain Power's website, Efficiency Vermont. Changing over to a different way of heating is a reality. I also want to take notice of something we did last year. Last year, we passed some laws to support reproductive health care. And what we're seeing is, around the country, other states are going the other way. Now, one of the good things about Vermont is we're not Texas. And if we were, and you were a woman with a problem pregnancy, you'd probably have to leave your state. That's what happened to a woman who had a problem pregnancy. Now, in Vermont, that's not going to happen. And I'm saying that because there are people in this state, in this area, that want to take us back to where that's not an option. We are not going to let that happen here in Vermont. These are hard-fought rights that we are not going to give up easily. Now, I know that you don't have to go far, as I said, to find gloom and doom in the news. I want to finish up with what I hope is a really hopeful story. Now, we can look at climate and the extremes that are happening and think, well, what do we do? Are there solutions out there? We can look at the conflicts around the world right now. There are armed conflicts that seem like there might not be solutions. So that's why I'm going to share that last month, the president of the Irish Senate visited the Vermont Legislature, Senator Mark Daly. Now, he was returning a visit from Irish-American state legislators from around the country who traveled to Ireland at their own expense to celebrate the 25th year of the Good Friday Peace Accords. Now, what he shared was, right up until they signed it, there were still people that did not believe this was going to happen. There were hundreds of years of English oppression, attempted genocide, starvation, bombings, back and forth. Hundreds of years of the troubles. And yet, 25 years ago, with the help of lots of American diplomacy, including our own Senator Pat Leahy, they signed that accord. And 25 years later, it's holding. We can do hard work. Government has a role in that. We can hold up hope. And whether it's on the national scene, international scene, or right here in Vermont, that's what we're working to do. We're working to bring hope, to bring a better today and a better tomorrow for all of us. So thank you for the opportunity to share and to serve you.
Any questions for Mike? Yes, Beth?
Beverly Teer. You mentioned that renewable energy is less expensive because there are subsidies and vouchers. And, you know, the money for those subsidies and vouchers and the extra gas tax all comes from our pockets. And I'd really like you to be more upfront with what this is really costing us.
Sure, the costs of running them, I especially want to note, are way less. Now, those subsidies are because a lot of us think we all benefit from cleaner energy. And I think if we look at the extremes of weather we've had in the last year, extreme heat, extreme rain, wildfire smoke, we need to do something. And even Vermont can do its part. And if we all don't do our part, it's not going to change. We haven't reached that point yet, but I think we have to act on that. And I say that burning wood, if I had burned oil, I'd be saving a lot more. So what I'm saying is, the upfront cost might be a little different. But the reality is, heating cleaner is actually heating cheaper, too. Jody, don't you have a question?
Any other questions for Mike? Yes.
First off, I think, you know, heating cleaner is always the best. But we saw a-
I'm sorry, could you stand and state your name? Forgive me.
I'm Bonnie Garland. We saw a documentary or something on WCAX News that was talking about the heat pumps and the programs that Green Mountain Power was doing to advocate for that. But we also saw within this that if the temperature dropped below a certain amount, it didn't heat your home efficiently, where they had to use other means to keep their homes warm. And I'm just wondering if, one, if that's true? And, two, do you think it's on the horizon that that won't be needed?
Every year, heat pumps get more efficient. Now, I still have my wood stove, and I have to say, there are days, as my wife says, we have a cozy fire. And what they tell you is, you should have another, another backup. But especially as this winter, which is going to be turned out to be, they say, the warmest winter on record, goes along. I haven't had any problem with our heat pump. I don't think we've had below zero this year. But what I understand is, it costs more as the temperature gets down below zero. There was just an article about Maine right now, which now leads the country in implementing of heat pumps. And they're finding, it's a different heat. I have to say, I prefer wood heat. But I also prefer, my back appreciates not putting up five cords of woody here. And it's a lot cheaper.
Bill?
Hey, Bill. Yeah, yeah, there we go. Bill Conley. Yeah, I've had no problem with heating my house 2,200 square feet with heat pumps, even in the coldest temperatures. So just want to make that comment. Housing, 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 housing. Mike, what can you tell us about what's happening at the state level to support more affordable and more housing for people?
And I would add, end conservation. Because what Vermont did when Madeleine Kuhn was governor, she established the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board. And in other states, those two things are at odds with each other and fighting for funding. And by creating those, putting those two things together, we have us working together. So yes, we need housing. So yes, we need housing. We are in the process of trying to fund more housing and also change the regulatory landscape so it becomes easier. And one of the things that we're using is the philosophy of smart growth, to do clustered housing and not to do sprawl anymore. This is what they do in Europe, and to me, it makes sense. It means less driving. It means less utilities having to go out around into the countryside. And especially as we get older, it becomes a concern about how far away we are from town. So it's something that, I don't know if your planning board, if your town plan is up for a renewal anytime soon, but it might be something to start to consider in the town plan is whether you want to start to look at any clustered housing. Around Vermont, there are a lot of towns that do have a downtown already. Just look up at Putney. We are going to continue to focus and try and build housing in clustered ways. One of the challenges is the cost right now, and I think we're going to have to put, invest in that. And one of the things our state treasurer can share is, he has found some really creative ways to take some of the money that his office has access to and put that into the mix. There's no one solution, but we're working on more money, more regulatory relief to try and make sure that housing is available for people who are here and people we want to bring here. At the same time, we want to make sure that the money that's budgeted, which the V H C B gets its money from property transfer tax. We want to make sure the allotted amount for conservation and housing, V H C B, goes where it should be. And that's one of the fights we keep having with the governor, where he keeps pulling that money out and wanting to put it somewhere else. And we're saying, that statute says the money should go there. We're going to make sure that's where it goes.
Any other questions for Mike? Okay, then we will welcome, oh, one more.
Testing, hello? My name is Marvin Luna. Good morning, everybody. I just had a specific question on the percentage of carbon emission from vehicles. Has it been calculated through people that drive through, or is this a local percentage of people? Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Sorry about that. So I had a specific question on the percentage of carbon emissions from vehicles. Is it specifically, like, is there a category separating local driving or driving through? And if it's more of a higher percentage of people that are driving through, more than local people, how could we combat and/or do something about that more specifically? Because I wasn't too sure if there was a distinction of who and how many from that percentage.
Sure. I, it's a good question, and I don't know that they pull out people driving through on the interstate. But my best guess is, we're focusing on drivers here in Vermont. And we don't have any smokestack industries here. That's why home heating and transportation are the biggest part of our carbon footprint. And my hope is that as we continue to change our driving habits and change the vehicles, average car, new car right now costs $47,000. I just bought a Chevy Bolt because it was $30,000, and then there's subsidy. And I would have to say, like the heat pump, it costs a lot less. The challenge is, we need infrastructure now for charging. And hopefully, some of the money from Washington in the IRA bill will come down, and we're putting money in for that, too. But if you want, I will try and get an answer to that question, and I'll give you my card, and you can email me, and we'll try and figure that out.
Thank you, Mike. So we will now welcome Mike Pieschak to the podium, our state treasurer.
Well, thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here with everyone. It's a pleasure because I grew up here in Brattleboro, so this is like coming home to Wyndham County. It's also a pleasure because our treasurer of our campaign, Molly Stoner, is a Dumerson resident, so we have a deep ties here in Dumerson. And longtime educator as well. But I want to pick up on Mike's note of optimism and also the question I heard from Bill around housing. The optimistic part of it, for me, is I view the Vermont economy as markedly different pre-pandemic and post-pandemic. Pre-pandemic, we were struggling to get people to move to Vermont. We were getting older, our workforce was getting smaller. We weren't seeing the kind of increases in our tax revenues that we'd want to see. Post-pandemic, that's really changed. We've seen people moving to Vermont. Anecdotally, I heard it. I went to every single town in Vermont as part of our campaign, 252 towns. And every time I went to a town and talked to a town clerk, they'd say, boy, I'm so busy. I'd say, why are you so busy? And they'd say, well, we've had so many people move to Vermont. We're filing all these kind of property records. And I said, well, that's interesting. Can you tell me more about them? And they'd say, well, they moved from out of state, they paid for their home in cash, and they brought their young family with them. And I said, well, that's really interesting. And so when I got into office, I wanted to understand, is that data there on the, not just on the anecdotal level, but on the qualitative, quantitative level? And when you look at the Census Bureau, you look at the IRS, in fact, it is. We've seen that more people have moved to Vermont in the last couple of years than have moved in the entire previous decade. And when you look at who has moved here from the IRS data, it's younger people in the sort of 24 to 44 age bracket. It's people that have more income, higher incomes. Of the about 6,000 people that have recently moved to Vermont, about half of them are earning $200,000 or more. So that's sort of the good side of the equation. There's people moving here, they're younger, they have higher incomes, and you see that reflected in our tax revenues. Our tax revenues have gone up hundreds of millions of dollars over the last four or five fiscal years. But what that has also done is put a tremendous amount of pressure on our workforce. And it's put a tremendous amount of pressure on our workforce because we have a severe shortage of housing. And a lot of those individuals that moved here with a $200,000 salary probably brought their job with them to Vermont. So they took a house off of the market without adding a worker to the local workforce, which put even more pressure on those of us that earn our living from Vermont, those of us that are in frontline jobs, teachers, nurses, firefighters, anyone working in retail hospitality. So that's the real pressure point on our housing situation. It's good that we've seen increased revenues. It's good that we've seen population growth, but we need to focus on that particular issue if we want to grow our economy anymore, and if we want to take care of a lot of the social issues that we're seeing in Vermont. Homelessness, A number one among them. But also, I don't know if anyone here has had challenges getting a medical appointment in the last few months. I'm guessing maybe so. But I attribute that to our shortage of housing. If you talk to any hospital CEO and say, you know, what's your biggest challenge? They'll say, housing. We offer a primary care doctor a job or a specialist a job, and then they take it and they can't find housing, and they eventually go somewhere else. Or you think about the cost of healthcare with individuals who are experiencing homelessness needing to end up in the emergency department. Or you think about traveling nurses that need to be hired because they can't find traveling nurses or can't find nurses to be based here in Wyndham County or other parts of our state because of the shortage of housing. So I think it's everything. I think we need to look at our land use policy. As Mike pointed out, our outdoor recreation and our natural beauty are critical for the infrastructure of Vermont, the future of Vermont. We need to protect those. And those are also drivers of our economy as well. We have one of the largest outdoor recreation economies in the country in terms of the percentage of it, our GDP. So it's really important that we protect that. But it's equally important that we build more housing in Vermont and do it in our densely populated areas where there's infrastructure, where there's services, and where we can do it less expensively. And if we can solve for that, if we can solve for the land use piece, I see no limitation to the future of our state. One of the things we did in the treasurer's office, considering that we have really significantly high interest rates right now, is we tried to think about, how can we leverage the state's balance sheet to support building more housing? And we expanded this program called the 10% in Vermont Program. We put $85 million and earmarked it for housing. And we said, we want to offer these in terms of low-interest rate loans, so 1% or 2% interest rate loans. And we've put that money out through the Vermont Housing Finance Agency, through the Vermont Economic Development Authority, through other organizations, and we're going to support the creation of about 1,100 new units of housing over the next three or four years, including housing here in Wyndham County. And the other thing that we're trying to do is, how do you make building housing less expensive? And we do have an investment that we're making in Brattleboro around mass timber, which we think will be the first investment of the like in Vermont. But it's a material that's much stronger than other materials, more environmentally friendly, and less expensive. So we need to think about ways we can build housing, but we need to think about ways we can build housing less expensively as well. And this isn't a problem that's going to go away, unfortunately, in a couple of years. We're going to continue to struggle with it over the next decade, in my opinion, in the same way that so many people moved to Vermont and took a house and didn't add a job to the local workforce. We have an older population. We have an older workforce. 100,000 people in our workforce are over the age of 55 years old. The Department of Labor expects 88,000 people to retire in Vermont over the next six years. So we're going to be seeing people leaving our workforce, but not necessarily moving out of state and opening up a house for a new worker. So as those individuals retire, and we're going to see a lot of them, if we don't build more housing, we're not going to have homes for nurses, or teachers, or firefighters, and all of the other critical resources that we need for our state, let alone the tax revenues we need to build a strong foundation for all of our communities across Vermont. So we're working hard on that. Our legislature is working hard on that, and it's going to be a continued focus of ours into the future. The last thing I just wanted to mention is that one of the things that we get to do that's a lot of fun at the treasurer's office is try to reconnect people with their lost money. So we have an unclaimed property fund in the treasurer's office. We have $120 million of unclaimed property that we're holding. We have a list here for Putney, just for an example, about 5,000 names on the list. Dumerson probably has thousands as well. And if you go to our website, missingmoney.com, it will have everyone that is listed in our office on that website. And just this morning, I sat down with my dad and showed him this list and said, boy, look at this person. He has $38,000 of unclaimed property. And he said, I know that person. I've been doing his taxes for 40 years. So I was able to call and say, hey, we have $38,000 for you that we're going to send a check your way. So not everyone has that much money, but I do encourage you to check the list and see if you or your family members or others in your community have money with our office. Thank you again for the opportunity to be here. Enjoy town meeting day. Thank you.
I think we can all be happy with that last part, huh? Charles. Microphone?
Chuck Fish. One of the important qualifications of a leader is that he knows how to speak loud and he knows how to speak clearly. My question is, have you thought of running for governor?
Well, Chuck, I appreciate your confidence. Appreciate your confidence, but, you know, I'm focused on my job right now, and I'm interested in running for reelection, which we'll probably be talking about in the coming weeks. But thank you very much for your confidence.
Joe?
I'm Joe Cook. Mike, as I looked at our town report, I see that we have a substantial number of accounts that are invested, I believe, in bank money market accounts, which, as I'm sure you know, are really not very competitive right now. Our capital fund is projected to yield 0.18%, at least at the time of the budget. I just looked up, for instance, the Vanguard Federal Money Market Account is now yielding 5.27% without risk, a short-term, you know, federal money market account. And I guess my question of you, Mike, is there any reason why the, and this is something I'd like to follow up with the select board and the treasurer perhaps at a later time, but is there any reason why a municipality like the town of Dumerson should not invest its substantial reserves in competitive interest rates at this point?
Well, it's a great question, Joe. You know, one of the things that's going on in the state of Vermont is that, you know, we have a, you know, our bank account, if you will, our state's bank account, it used to be maybe 100 or 200, 300 million dollars would be in the bank account at any given time. And since we've seen people moving to Vermont, since we've seen our budgets increase and our revenues increase, and a lot of federal money coming into our state, on average, we now have over $2 billion in our cash account that we're waiting to either be appropriated or has been appropriated that's being, waiting to be spent. So at the treasurer's office, we get a very competitive rate through our banking relationships of about 2, about 5.25%, 5.5%. And that's meant that we've been bringing in tens of millions of dollars in interest income into the state of Vermont. I think it's now the fourth-largest item in the general fund, something like 77, 80 million dollars a year. So that's great. Other states will offer programs, a municipal pooled program, where you could take advantage of that at the local level, at the rates that we're able to get at the state level. So I think that's something that we should be able to look at. But at the end of the day, whether it's the state or it's the town, you want to make sure the money is as safe as it can be and has to be collateralized and it has to be there if you need it. So oftentimes, those other funds might not have the same kind of risk protection, but longer term, we should think about ways that we can support municipalities by leveraging the balance sheet at the state of Vermont. Thanks, Joe. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mike? Okay, thank you. If you recall, there's a motion on the floor. The motion on the floor is that we approve total highway fund expenditures of $711,000, $711,450, of which 574,950 shall be raised by taxes and 136,500 by non-tax revenues for the period from July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2025. Zeke rushed through his presentation of the budget a bit.
Yes, I have some more jokes.
He has some more jokes? Would you like to hear more of Zeke's jokes about the budget? Anything else you want to say, and then we'll take questions.
There is one other thing. Please. The amount of taxes, the amount of tax, I'm going to run for governor soon. The amount of taxes to be raised is in part higher. We didn't have much of a surplus to apply to our taxes to be raised. I think last year, we have about 27,000 that we are applying to the general fund line, bottom line, but we have zero surplus in the highway department. Usually, we have, you know, 57,000, 97,000 that we can apply to the budget that we raise. So.
I'll also add, if you read in the views of Dumerson, Todd Davidson's article about the budget, the percentage of your tax bill that is made up by the municipal budget is quite a bit smaller. What's that percentage, Todd, do you remember, than the school portion of your tax bill?
It's about 19% of the total. 18 or 19.
Okay. So the portion of your tax bill that's made up of the municipal budget is about 18, maybe 19%. So the increase in the municipal budget isn't going to raise your whole tax bill by as much as you might think. The school district, my understanding is, has done quite a bit better than many other communities this year, and it's being raised. I think I heard somebody before say 2%. I think it's 3% and change over last year. Of course, that can be impacted by public funds and all of that kind of thing, but just so you know that. What questions do you have on the highway fund? Jody? Microphone?
Jody, Jody Normado? Just wanted to make sure that the same questions that I asked for the previous article applies to the highway, that the fact that you make changes every year in the salaries, et cetera, and that you put the benefits all under the highway, you know, you're, I don't, oh.
There it is.
I don't want to blow everybody away, that you put the benefits on the appropriate category. So I wanted to make this sure that that's done.
Any other questions, concerns? Jody was saying that she wanted to repeat her request that the Select Board put all fringe benefits for each department in that area of the budget instead of grouping them all under administrative. Any other questions? Okay. Sounds like you're ready for the question, and so I will repeat that it has been moved and seconded that we approve the total highway fund expenditures of $711,450, of which $574,950 shall be raised by taxes and $136,500 by non-tax revenues for the period of July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2025. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and you have passed your highway fund expenditure. I've had a request to move something up, some honoring of people from Article 11, which is other business. And the only way I can do that legally is by saying that I'm going to begin our lunch break a little bit early, and we're going to start our lunch break by inviting... Sorry, this is another one of those glitches, where do I have that? Who was I going to invite up first? It was first Bill Holiday, is Bill Holiday here? He is, Bill. Bill Holiday is known by many of you, he used to be on the Select Board, and he has some announcements to make.
I used to ask my students at school, actually, well, I was just having fun, but I never used a microphone. And when I was speaking to them, they would say, "Mr. Holiday, they can hear you down on Main Street." So I'm not usually too hard to hear. I'm up here because I've been asked, but I didn't have to be asked if I'd known what was going on. And that is to honor a couple of Select Board members who are leaving us, at least the Select Board. I was on the Select Board with both of these gentlemen, and I mean that sincerely, gentlemen. And I have to tell you, I was so impressed with both of them in very different ways. When I went to my first Select Board meeting, it was the first time, I think, that I had met Zeke Goodman. Everybody in Dumerson knows Zeke, his name was on the ballot all the time, and he was perpetually the highest vote getter in years and years and years, elections. So I knew who he was, but I really didn't know who he was. So I went in and sat down, and Zeke was on my left. Lou White was on my right. Tom Bodett was up at the head of the table, because at that time, he was the chairperson of the Select Board. And I looked at Zeke, and like probably many of you who looked at Zeke for the first time, you wondered, "Who is this guy?" Lighten up, Zeke. You look way too tight, I'm not going to do you dirty here. What I found was a delightful fellow with a wonderful sense of humor, although as dry as you can possibly imagine. You need to pay attention to Zeke in order to appreciate his sense of humor. But when he spoke, it was always in the interest of the people of Dumerson. There's nobody here, including these two gentlemen, who are not looking out for your best interests. Yes, taxes go up all the time, but if there was a way to bring taxes down, these two guys would have done it. Zeke did so many things that went unrecognized. One time, there was a complaint about the steps going down to the West River by the covered bridge. Some people had some difficulty, so Zeke says, "Well, at a Select Board meeting, I guess I'll go over there and see what I can do." And I said, "Well geeze, Zeke, you're not gonna do that alone." And so one day, Zeke and I grabbed our shovels and our rakes, and we went over and looked at what was the matter over there, and fixed it to the best of our ability. Now it's been fixed, much better, of course, with some funds expended. But that's the kind of guy Zeke is. Louis is a totally different guy, but ends up in the same place that Zeke does, and that is looking out for the best interests of all of you, all of us, I should say. Every time I come into this building, it's a bit of, my knees quake a little bit, because I started my teaching career right here in 1972. This room that you're in did not exist that year, my first year teaching here. It was built, and I taught Louis. Well, wait a minute, I tried to teach Louis. I gave it a good shot, yeah. But Louis was a great guy then, he's a great guy now. And at one point, Louis, who just shared something that he had shared with me years ago, he shared it again with me in the, I won't say the boys' bathroom, because that doesn't exist anymore, but in the bathroom. He said, "You know, my father told me something a long time ago, and that was, if you're apologizing all the time, you're hurting people, you're saying the wrong things. If you don't have something decent to say, or good to say, or something that will alienate people, then don't say anything at all." And he's adhered to that for the most part. One time, he got upset at a Select Board meeting and quit. He left, I said, "Louis, what are you, you can't do that." I just did. And one of his children, eventually, when it was reported in the newspaper and word filtered down even the little kids, said to him, "Dad, you're not going to be running the town anymore." So both of these gentlemen, fantastic people. And congratulations on your years and years of service to this town. They wanted to get Tom Bodett to come here and talk today about these guys. He would have been far more entertaining than I ever could be. But Tom couldn't come today, but I wanted to share a Tom Bodett-ism with you as we finish up. And that is, when Select Board meetings ended, we would naturally filter out the door. And sometimes, not very often, Tom would leave a little bit ahead of us, Zeke and I, and Louis. And so as Tom meandered down the sidewalk toward his car one night, we, under our breaths, kind of said to one another, "Don't worry, Tom, we'll turn the light out for you." Zeke, Louis, and they have something for you, where do you go? Alex.
Yeah, so to follow up Bill's comments about Zeke and Louis, I just want to emphasize how grateful the rest of us on the Select Board are for their tremendous service over many years, and to present some token gifts to our colleagues. Both of these gifts were made by a Dumerson woodworker, Sonny Brooks, who many of you probably know on Dumerson Station Road. I met him at the Apple Pie Festival, and he does amazing work. So for Zeke, we've got a cutting board inlaid with the pollinator bee, recognizing Zeke's career as a celebrated orchardist, as all of you probably know. At least, it's an insect sort of like a bee, I'm not sure that it is. It might actually be a cicada, but it was the closest we could find on short notice. And then for Louis, recognizing that he's now going to have lots more spare time being off the Select Board, we thought he might decide to hang out at Shingle as a tradesman more actively. And in case he goes into plumbing, maybe with his son or on his own, we bought him this sign to hang out. And we've all come to know Louis for his thoroughness on budgeting and attention to detail. So we thought that he could help with invoicing on any plumbing business he starts. So let me read these to you. It reads, plumber, hourly rate, minimum $100 an hour. If you watch, $180 an hour. If you help, $199 an hour. If you worked on it first, $299 an hour. And if you tell me how to do my job, $499 an hour. So good luck to both of you, thanks Louis.
Thank you, everyone. We are going to break for lunch now, we will reconvene at about 12:45. Roger, point of order?
Could I just say that the friends in the library is doing an adopt a book in the library? So if you have kind of lunch, you can go in and adopt the books.
Thank you. Thank you, see you again at 12:45, enjoy your lunch. We are up to Article 8, which reads, shall the voters authorize raising the sum of $27,459 through taxes and appropriate said amount to the Highway Blasting and Ledge Crushing Reserve Fund for future blasting and crushing?
Madam Moderator, I move that we raise the sum of $27,459 through taxes and appropriate said sum, amount, to the highway, to the Highway Blasting, Ledge, and Crushing Reserve Fund for the future blasting and crushing.
Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded that we raise the sum of $27,459 through taxes and appropriate said amount to the Highway Blasting and Ledge Crushing Reserve Fund for future blasting and crushing. Any questions? Any debate? Ed. Gretchen?
Ed Antis, what areas are being looked at for the use of this money?
This money is used for the gravel pit that Dumerson purchased with Putney a few years back, and it was agreed between the townspeople of Putney and Dumerson to blast every five years in order to get the gravel. And we both put in the same amount each year in order to get the price down. If we did it by ourselves, that we would pay quite a bit more. But by doing it with Putney, and they've agreed to do it the same way, and we all agreed here a few years back when we purchased it to do it this way.
Any other questions, concerns? Seeing no hands, I'll assume you're ready for the question. The motion on the floor is that we raise the sum of $27,459 through taxes and appropriate said amount to the Highway Blasting and Ledge Crushing Reserve Fund for future blasting and crushing. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. And you have raised and spent money on blasting and crushing. Article 9, shall the voters grant tax-exempt status to the Evening Star Grange for a period of one year pursuant to the provisions of Title 32, Section 3840?
I move that we grant tax-exempt status to the Evening Star Grange for a period of one year pursuant to the provisions of Title 32, Section 3840.
Is there a second? Harold seconds it, so does Maria. It has been moved and seconded that we grant tax-exempt status to the Evening Star Grange for a period of one year pursuant to the provisions of Title 32, Section 3840. Any information, questions, concerns, debate? Seeing none. It has been moved and seconded that we grant tax-exempt status to the Evening Star Grange for a period of one year pursuant to the provisions of Title 32, Section 3840. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and Evening Star Grange is tax-exempt for one year. Is Mark Brown here? All right. Article 10 reads, shall the voters grant tax-exempt status to Green Mountain Camp for a period of one year pursuant to the provisions of Title 32, Section 3840? Is there a motion? Maria, do you want to make the motion, and then we'll have Mark's? Oh, you're waiting for a mic? Okay.
Can, can, oh, that sounds, I hear me now. Again. I move that the voters grant tax-exempt status to Green Mountain Camp for a period of one year pursuant to the provisions of Title 32, Section 3840.
Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded that we grant tax-exempt status to Green Mountain Camp for a period of one year pursuant to the provisions of Title 32, Section 3840. Mark, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, a little bit. If you haven't read your views of Dumerson, and Green Mountain Camp is going through some changes, and sadly, we are moving on from our fabulous director, and I'm gonna let her speak a little bit to the goings on here.
So I'll call on Billy, Billy, introduce yourself and go ahead.
My name is Billy Slade, and I am the retiring director of Green Mountain Camp. I've been there for the last 12 years. And as most of you know, it's a pretty magical place, and I am very, very grateful for the community's support throughout the years. And I'm equally excited to introduce our new director, who moved here from Wisconsin this month. And this is Sam Luchek, who's gonna carry on the magic. Thank you.
Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none. The motion on the floor is that we grant tax-exempt status to Green Mountain Camp for a period of one year pursuant to the provisions of Title 32, Section 3840. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and Green Mountain Camp is exempt for another year. Article 11, we're going to start with Louis White.
I just wanted to recognize a couple people. The first one was Tom Brady, but my wife said I couldn't do it because she never deflated anybody's property values. But we're talking Gene Newell, nobody knows, she's the GOAT. And Gene, I've known for years, and she's just done her job wonderfully. And, you know, she retired once, came back because the town needed her to come back. And just the volunteer time she's put in, it's a great honor to even know Gene, and all the work she's done for this town is just amazing, and I'd really like to thank her. Gene, could you come up, please?
How many years? 25 years, and last year was honored by the state of Vermont as Lister of the Year. Dummerston has been very fortunate.
The next person I'd like to say something about is our town treasurer, and I guess we can't call her just the town treasurer, she's the town, everything. I mean, she stepped in with FEMA on many different projects, helping with grants, writing grants. She's gone way above and beyond anything, any treasurer, I believe, in any town has ever done. And it's great. I've been on the select board for different years and always been able to go in, ask a question, get an answer, didn't have an answer, she would get me the answer. It's, I just remember one time I was going, working on my computer with Lori, and Lori got a phone call. Charlotte says, well, let me see what's wrong with your computer, came over, and we had the problem fixed. Just amazing what Charlotte has done. And I, I just, unbelievable this person is. And she's stepping, stepped up, she's been the, she's done many different jobs, and hopefully she's going to be a Lister again. I guess I can't really say that because she is on the ballot, so forget I said that. But thank you very much, Charlotte, for all your time, and it's been an honor to work with you. And she has been a Lister for, since 2016, I mean, a town treasurer since 2016.
Thank you. Next up, I'm looking for Isha's hand. You're next. Can we get a mic there, please?
My name is Isha Williams. I'd like to make a three-part motion to create a new town forest. Step one, the select board should offer Mark Younger the appraised price of $313,000 for his 68 acres on Middle Road.
Isha, I'm going to interrupt you. You can't really make a, you can't move that we're going to do this today because it was not warned. What you can move is an advisory to the select board, get a sense of the assembly on your concern, but it's not something that we can actually do today because it was not warned. So if you want to reword the beginning of that, and then please continue.
The select board should offer Mark Younger the appraised price of $313,000 for his 68 acres on Middle Road. This offer should be conditional on the next two steps happening. Step two, if he accepts, the select board should apply to let the state, V H C B, to apply for $150,000 from the state. The select board should let the neighbors who've donated and spent about $3,500 for this effort help write and submit the application. The application should include a request to V H C B to steward the land for free, and the select board should offer to have volunteers appointed by the select board help with stewardship. Step three, if the state approves this funding, the select board should call a special town meeting to approve a 22-year municipal bond for the rest of the funding needed to buy this land. And can I, I'd like to say a few things in support of that.
Okay, let me ask you first, do you have a copy of this that can be part of the official record or that people can make a?
Yes.
Okay. Is that something that you could give to Gretchen and she could bring it up front for Lori to have as town clerk? Thank you.
So.
Yes. First, I'm going to ask for a second, see if anybody would like to second this motion so it can be up for consideration. Lynn Levine, I see you seconding this motion. So I'm not going to repeat it, but why don't you go ahead and explain it to us?
So neighbors have been walking on this land for decades, and that recently ended because the new owner posted no trespassing signs. But before that happened, we saw moose, bears, foxes, owls many times, many other kinds of birds. There's a lot of wetlands, ponds, streams on this land, and we have seen fish in those. This is invaluable for recreation. We propose it via town forest. There's a lot of wetlands there, they help prevent flooding of the kind that caused hundreds of millions of dollars worth of damage last summer in Vermont. There's, it has been, had enormous trees on it, it's being logged right now, but they will grow back. And one of the best things we can do for climate change is to protect forest land and leave it. So that's.
Okay.
So what this would cost, I just did this by dividing the town's population. As of 2020, there are 1,865 people in town. That's probably gone up a bit, but the loan would be for, if, assuming it was $200,000, which it should be less, but definitely wouldn't be more. The, dividing the population by the amount of the loan payment for the first year, the loan payment is $17,359 the first year, it goes down steadily until the last year when it would be $9,467. So the first year per person, per year on average, and poorer people pay less, richer people pay more based on the value of your house, it would be $9.30 per person, and that will go down steadily until the last year, it would be $5.08 per person per year. And this would be a bit lower because I didn't include second homes, of which there's a lot of second homes in Dummerston where people don't live in them, so they're not counted in their population, they're just vacation homes. Also, there's some commercial real estate in town, and also, interest rates will probably go down, they're high now. And when they go down, this is from the Vermont Bond Bank, they will go down, but they will never go up. So that's what it would cost.
Okay. I am going to reread this so everybody knows what we're talking about and what they'd be voting on. So I'm going to change this a little bit in the beginning, Isha, to say that this, you'd like to create a new town forest, and so you'd like the body to vote to advise the select board to offer Mark Younger the appraised price of $313,000 for his 68 acres on Middle Road. And this offer should be conditioned on the next two steps happening. Step two is if he accepts, the select board should apply to the state, the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board, for $150,000 toward that purchase price. The select board, select board should let the neighbors who have donated and spent about $3,500 for this effort help write and submit the application to V H C B. The application should include a request to V H C B to steward the land for free, and the select board should offer to have volunteers appointed by the select board help with the stewardship. And finally, if the state approves this funding, the select board should call a special town meeting to approve a 22-year municipal bond for the rest of the funding needed to buy this land. And I think that's what you were just referencing in terms of probably less than $200,000 and what that would cost the average resident in town. Concerns? I first saw your hand, Eva. Dan?
Okay.
Okay.
Isha's done a lot of work on this, and it would be, in my opinion, a really good opportunity for us. Hello, sorry. Isha's done a ton of work on the background of this. This would get us not even in line with the towns around us, we're, we have a lot less protected acreage than the towns around us. This is a kind of, I think, easy opportunity for us to get something fairly affordable that we're lacking compared to other towns around us. I strongly support it, I'd advise you to look into it and consider it.
Okay. Who else had their hand up in the front?
I second.
State your name, please.
Oh, hi, I'm Eva Nolan. I second supporting Isha to support this measure. One of the things, when we started, when he started to do this, he did a lot of work meeting with the Vermont Housing Conservation. Looking at our wetlands, we have very few wetlands compared to other, sorry, we have very few wetlands compared to other towns. And if, if we don't protect our wetlands, there's more floods. And what's happening is that the wetlands that we have, it's creating like a web, sort of like a web of safety. So as each one gets filled up and we start to lose that, that protection gets less and less. So doing something like this would be looking into the future, and every dollar that we spend, we get so much more return on investment, not only for protection, for the housing, the roads, the infrastructure, but also the animals, the animals that visit the wetlands, the birds, the turtles. He talked about mooses and foxes. I know for us, it's a real loss for the community that we can't walk through that road anymore, and that people can't hike and even hunt anymore. So not only would you be protecting that wetlands, but you'd also get like a really beautiful forest on top of that. And it's also, the name, if it does happen, is called Owl Sanctuary, if that did happen to be, that reality happened to come true. And I would love to be able to take Donovan, my children, through that forest, and for that wetland to be protected.
Okay. One more hand, and then you. Down front here, Gretchen?
Hi, Ally Stevenson. I'm going to preface this by saying I'm exceptionally pro-conservation, and I'm a farmer myself and really interested in sustainability and, you know, how we steward our land going forward. But I wonder, have you considered using any of the larger organizations that exist in Vermont for conservation first? And I'm a little biased because I live with Zeke and I hear how firsthand, like how difficult it is to get people to volunteer for these positions in Vermont. And I worried hearing, granted, only the barest minimum of your proposal, but I worried that it sounded like sort of a best possible scenario, that if you get the grant and if you get the volunteers. And I wonder if utilizing some of these larger conservation-based organizations in Vermont might allow you to take care of this land better because they have full-time employees, if that's something you guys have looked into.
Gretchen, if you could return the microphone to Isha. Isha, you can answer that question as a point of information.
Yes, if you're thinking of Vermont Land Trust and the Nature Conservancy, we have asked both of them. Vermont Land Trust said they would do it, but they would charge $100,000 fee for their labor for applying to V H C B, the state for the funding, and $100,000 stewardship fee. So that's why we decided not to pursue it with them. And the Nature Conservancy said it's too small, they're working on, you know, 10,000-acre parcels, so that was the result of that.
Zeke, you had a question or comment?
It's, okay, can, can you hear this?
No.
They tell me it's on.
Dan?
There.
Dan, we need help with the mic, or do you want to come up here?
I, Zeke, good man. I just wanted to correct a statement about conserved land in town. So, uh, let's see, we've got about 1,300 acres preserved through the Nature Conservancy, Dutton State Park, the Deer Run Conservancy, the Greenhoe Road, what?
Canoe Brook Road.
Oh, Canoe Brook Road. Prospect Hill, there's a Pinnacle Trail system, and Friends of West River Trail. There's conserved farmland, Elysian Hills, the Howe Property, Dummerston Station, and the Bunker Farm. And we have 9,785 acres that are in current use. So we have quite a bit of forested and conserved land in town. But I don't, I think the idea of what you're talking about is good, but most mornings when I get up, there's a logging truck, a dump, you know, a tandem logging truck that's been going by loaded with logs from this property. So I don't know how much of woods there are still left there.
Eva, I can't call on you until I've called on everybody else who hasn't spoken yet. I'll call on Beverly next.
Beverly Teer.
It's on, you just got to hold it up really close.
Okay. I'm Beverly Teer. You know, I enjoy hiking, I enjoy nature, but if every time somebody buys a piece of land and we scoff it up so we can conserve it, we aren't going to have anybody to pay taxes in this town. You know, every time we eliminate a taxpayer, we increase everybody else's tax burden. And I think we need to consider that, especially with other things that are happening.
Okay, I think I saw Jody's hand.
Jody in Ormedo, Dummerston. I'm not part of any group that has been working on this. I am just, I have it closer to my mouth. How close are we? Okay, that'll work. Yes, that's okay, I'll blow your ears out. I am just, not quite a neighbor, but a neighbor. I have walked and skied, et cetera, that property for 53 years. It is a wonderful, gorgeous piece of property. It had beautiful trees, it has a lot of wetlands on it. In fact, I was quite surprised that the state allowed this to happening and how, allowed it to be logged. It is being very heavily logged, which is a shame because of all the animals and birds that are in there. So I am in agreement with these people who have been trying to fight it, I think most of them are neighbors. Right now, there's no trespassing signs all over it, so people are not allowed to walk or ski or do anything on it. And with the heavy, heavy logging, it's not going to be very attractive for a long time. But I do think that it bears responsibility for our town and our town folks to conserve that. It is not a developable piece of land. So we're not going to be losing a lot of houses or anything like that. But it is a piece of land that is gorgeous and most of us appreciate it. So I would back part of what's being proposed.
Jody, please hand the microphone to the person to your right.
Hi, Chris Olson. I just had a point of information. I'm not entirely clear on what parcel we're talking about. I think I know, but I would just like to have that clarified, please.
Is that a point of information? You can answer for? You can answer for us, Esha. Can you describe where the property is? And is Mark Younger in the room? Okay. Gretchen, can you return the microphone to Esha?
Yeah, it's on Middle Road. It's next, you access it next to the fire pond that's between Kipling Road and Dutton Farm Road, just to the left of the fire pond if you're standing on Middle Road. But it reaches almost all the way to East West Road and it borders Elysian Hills, which is protected open space. And it goes up to the house. I don't know if you noticed, it has a blue roof now. Just they painted the roof on Middle Road, just uphill from me. I'm at 1061 Middle Road. And if you're at Dutton Farm Road, you go up from there on the right, you'll see a house with a blue roof. It borders that land too, so it's a big piece of land. I just wanted to respond to what Beverly Teer said about how taxes will go up if we protect this land. The towns that have the most protected open space have the lowest property taxes. There's been studies about that. You can find out, if you don't believe the studies, just call the Rattleboro Town Office. Their taxes are much higher than us. They have town water, town sewer, full-time fire, full-time police. So protecting open space keeps taxes down in the long run.
Lee? Right in the middle here, Gretchen. Raise your hand, Lee. I'm sorry, I'm calling on Lee Chamberlain. Lee, can you stand? There we go.
Hello, I have a different.
Could you state your name?
Lee Chamberlain. I have a different perspective on this. This land was for sale for a number of years. There's not anyone in this room who went and offered to buy it. This person came along, bought the property and been nothing but harassed by, he got all his permits for the wetlands, everything. He wants to build a house on the property. And now, without even asking him the price of the property, because I'm almost guaranteed 311 is not going to be high enough for 68 acres. And if anyone had 68 acres here, they would not sell it for 311. And I think it's, there is a bunch of conserved land. Charlotte actually has the acreage. It's like 1,000, right? 2,200 acres of conserved land. But we're supposed to be welcoming, right, to people? So this person buys this piece of land, what's been for sale for a long period of time because other people did not want to buy it. They didn't want to spend their money to buy it and preserve it. But when he bought it, then everyone in this group is giving him a hard time. He bought the property, he got the permits. We're supposed to be opening to different people coming into town. And, and I just don't understand why we're trying to do this to him.
Okay, now the woman in the back.
I'm not good with these things. Hi there, I'm Ann Schroeder and I'm a butter of the property. And I've only been there 30 years, so I can't top Jody, who's over 50 years. I've been walking on this land, I've been snowshoeing on this land. And, you know, and then all of a sudden there's all these no trespassing signs. And it's a beautiful piece of property. And the wetland is what really concerns me, what's happening. And I think a lot of people drive by Middle Road and they see the pond. And that's where, I mean, I don't know if anybody else saw. I saw a moose there and this was over 30 years ago. Some people may remember when there was a moose hanging out right by that pond for quite a while. And a lot of people drive by there. It's a beautiful piece of land. And I just think it would be really nice to have a town forest right there. So, thank you.
In the back row, right there, Gretchen? Back row?
Hi, I'm Annalisa Fedorik. I'll admit, I'm not that knowledgeable on this, but as one of the few younger people in this room, it will significantly impact the lives of me and a lot of other people in my generation if we don't protect the wetlands. And I encourage you all to think about newer residents, both in the near future and in the further future of who's going to live here and how we're going to protect our environment because it matters. It matters a lot and it affects us a lot, how we treat the climate. So, yeah, that's it.
Beverly, you've already spoken, so I'm going to call on others who have not spoken on this issue yet. Paul Normandot in the front. Mabel?
Paul, Paul Normandot, you hear me?
Yep.
I, I agree with a lot of what everybody said, which was, which makes it difficult. But this property being heavily logged the way it is, it has been, it doesn't make a very good basis for a town forest, if that's the purpose. And we have seen some change in the wildlife movement since this property has been purchased and logged. Now, I don't always disagree with my wife, but I'm going to today. So I hope I get dinner tonight. I, I think this is not the right time to be doing this. Our taxes are going up, but that's not the primary reason. I, I think it was a valuable piece of property. It is a unique piece of property. But I don't think the town should be involved in buying it at this time for this purpose. So I would, I would vote against it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who hasn't? Joe Cook?
I have a quick question.
State your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Joe Cook. I have a quick question. I'm hoping somebody can answer it. When did the current owner of the property buy the property? And do we know how much he paid for it?
Esha, if you can confine your answer to answering the question, please.
Mark Younger bought this land in November 2022. He paid $170,000 for it. And I just want to finish. He, we met with him and asked him if he would sell it. He voluntarily, willingly agreed to sell it to us. The neighbors met with him, including Ann Schroeder and my wife Elizabeth. About 10 of us met with him at his property. And he told us he would get $100,000 worth of trees off it, which he is doing as we speak. The machines are going in all this mud. So he effectively paid $70,000 for it. And this proposal is to pay him $313,000. So he agreed to 325, so it's pretty darn close. Since then, he stuck with that price steadily for almost a year. Since then, he said he wants more, but maybe he'll change his mind again, since he's changed it once.
Okay. And, you know? Charlotte, do you have the mic?
Hi. Nope. I'm Charlotte Anis, I'm the current town treasurer, for a few more minutes. And having gone through getting a bond for this town, it's a huge endeavor. And it will cost at least $20,000 to have an audit because the bond bank doesn't give money away if you don't have a professional audit. And I'd also like to say that I don't know anybody in this room that buying a piece of property, paying whatever was the fair price at that point, going through all the permitting, doing their due diligence. I don't think any of us would like somebody coming in after the fact and all of a sudden saying, oh, we don't like the fact that you've bought this property. So I think it's a slippery slope to all of a sudden second guess our residents who did what they barely did. I mean, that's just that.
Louis. Louis White.
He's Louis White.
Dan, are you in the room? We're having trouble with the microphones. Thank you, Johnny. Do you want to come up here, Louis?
Louis White. I, I know you guys said you thought it was going to be 311. Mr. Younger's been offered 375 for the property. He turned it down. I offered him more than that. He turned it down. He said it's going to have to have a four in front of it before he's even considered selling it at this point. And for you people who say he doesn't let hunting on there, he lets hunting on there. I went and asked him if I could hunt on his property. He said I could. I've known Mr. Younger for a while, so that might be part of it. But he did say I could hunt on it. He gave my sons permission to hunt on this property. It's, it's the way you approach somebody. I know somebody said, well, it was the way Mr. Younger went out and put the posters out there. I heard both sides of this now. I heard how people approached him. And that's one reason the signs went out the way they went out. A guy wants to build a house and we're telling him he can't. I didn't see anybody. There's a house just down Middle Road that was built, close to wetlands. There was a house built, or going to be built up the road, a good portion of acreage. I didn't see anybody complain about those two. I just think, you know, let, let people do what they want with their property. They went out and bought it, you didn't. And you're not, you're not going to be getting it for 311,000. So I think if you're not willing to go in with a four in front of that number, you, we're wasting the select board's time.
Lou?
Lou Sorensen. I support the motion. I understand that there is a lot of ifs and froths that are to follow if the motion passes. I should say that Gail and I are butters to the property at just a point, point on point. I testified at the DRB hearing on the permit issue and I supported the town zoning administrators' issuance of all the permits because he followed the law and that's the way it should be. I think that this is a valuable property as to conservation values. And I'm sorry that it has been logged to the extent that it has. I don't see any problem in keeping the door open and the town pursuing possibilities and see where it goes. Thank you.
We have a request for a mic from Phoebe. Now, Phoebe, just a moment. Phoebe is not a registered voter because she's too young. But if there's no objection, she is a resident of Dumerson. Any objection to Phoebe speaking? Okay, Phoebe, go ahead.
Phoebe Wagner. I'm speaking as someone who lives right next to this land. Like, I wake up every morning and I can look out my window and right down my field, I can see all the logging that's there. And it has been logged very severely. If we do buy this land, like, if you guys buy this land, even then, it would be easily a very long process to restore it. As much as I do want it, like, I used to hike and play and be in those brooks like all the time when I was in third, fourth and a little bit of my fifth grade years. Like, I used to play back there. But as much as I want it to be there, like, by the time it is restored, I'm probably not going to be able to enjoy it and maybe some of the younger generations will. But like, it's going to be such a long process and so much money to do that. Thank you.
In the back, Gretchen? Gretchen, in the back?
Yeah, that's my kid.
State your name, please.
My name is Jesse Wagner. I also bought this property. I was hoping to never, ever speak in front of a lot of people and so, but here I am. I really have, this thing has torn me apart for months. I had tried for two years before it even went on the market to try to find an organization who would purchase this land and put it under conservation easement, which is very difficult, especially in a town that has organizations like Green Mountain Conservancy that are dealing with many land acquisitions at once. When the land was purchased, I was one of the group that Mr. Chamberlain mentioned has harassed Mr. Younger, which I have never spoken to Mr. Younger or harassed him about anything. I think that was a false claim. My original intention, when we sort of got together as a group, was to stop a 1,600-foot road from going through Class II wetland. It said right at the bottom of that deed when Mr. Younger purchased it, that this land will likely not be able to be developed due to limited access through a wetland. It was not any beef that I ever had with Mr. Younger. It was the hope that the DEC would understand that this access, however it had been zoned in the past, it had been subdivided 20 or 30 years ago and any reasonable access to a 70-acre lot was subdivided away. Maybe this is an issue with our town zoning. I don't know. I don't understand the history or how a 70-acre parcel gets marooned without ax, reasonable access to it. But it had nothing to do with Mr. Younger. It had to do with, I didn't want to see a wet, a road through a wetland. And when we failed because Mr. Younger was able to get that wetland permit, to me, it was, it was, I was disappointed. And watching from our hilltop view, it get flattened has been disappointing as well. That said, I spent a lot of time cutting trees in my life for work. And I understand logging and I understand making money off the parcel. And I understand that Mr. Younger owns it. Our pestering of Mr. Younger came after he spent 45 minutes in front of the select board yelling at our town zoning coordinator for, for basically berating him, which was an embarrassment, I thought was a terrible thing for our town. So that's not a welcoming thing for Mr. Younger to do to our town. And after that, we kept an eye on him. We said, if he's going to get a zoning permit, we need to keep an eye on it. And that's what we did. Mr. Younger never posted his zoning permit for 15 days. And that's what he is supposed to do. That is the law so that people can provide public comment on that period. He lied to the Development Review Board that he had done so.
Let's be careful about the words we use.
This is.
Thank you.
This was never a not welcoming Mr. Younger thing. And I definitely understand that he owned the land and that was fair and that we lost in our cause. We were hoping to protect the wetland. There's a road there. So I just wanted to set that right, that I've never been unwelcoming to Mr. Younger. It had nothing to do with him personally. I didn't want the land developed when this started. And now it's sort of torn me apart because I hate to see where it's gone, but I do also understand that this is, this is how things work. And he owns the land fair and square. So the, the acquisition part of it, again, still torn about. But I just wanted that to be there, that I don't want to be a member of a group and a member, a citizen of a town that's not welcoming to people. Because that is not what this began. It could have been any other person purchasing the land. It had nothing to do with him. I really didn't want to see the land get developed.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this for the first time?
Y'all hear me? I'm Chip Ellis from West Dumerson. You know, it is kind of a tough thing when you buy a piece of land. You take a lot of pride in it. You got, you know, ideas, dreams. And as soon as someone confronts you on what you're going to do, it's not, it's, it's very difficult to say, thank you very much and be happy about it. So I see the animosity here. And as I'm looking over here at Mr. Normandot, I can remember five acres of land next to my house that if someone ever built on it, it would totally destroy what I had worked since I was 18-years-old building. So I got with him and we, we got a good price. You were a little doubtful that these people from New Jersey were going to take this price and I bought it. So the moral of the story is, if you want to protect yourself, your wants, then step up. It's a term my brother and I use called OPM. It's called other people's money. And you know, if you're that, you know, if you want something bad enough, you know, step up and put your money where your mouth is. step up and put your money where your mouth is. And there is, if there was no other areas in this town that you could hike on, there's trails all over the place. How many people that are sitting in this room right now take advantage of that? 80%, 90%, or just a select few? So I know Mark. I've known him for a long time. And yeah, he can rub people the wrong way. But when you're confronted, it's sometimes very hard to control your emotions, especially when you've dumped a lot of money into a project. And really think about what the end game will be. We don't know what he's going to do. He might plant 200 apple trees in there, put in food plots. You could have more wildlife than people complain about the bears and deer eating their plants and stuff. So, you know, maybe give the guy a chance, and it might wind up being better than it was. Thank you.
I saw Gail's hand. Gretchen, raise your hand. Gail?
Just one quick question. Has this been referred at all to the Dummerston Conservation Commission? And do they have any input on what our needs are or what we ought to be doing?
Can someone from the Dummerston Conservation Commission answer that question? Would that be you in the back?
Hi, I'm Christine Gett. I'm the chair of the Dummerston Conservation Commission. We were very interested in conserving this land. It was a tempting plot prior to the logging. You know, being adjacent to Elysian Hills and being part of wildlife corridors and being a wetland, it was a very nice piece of land. I consulted with a lot of people in town that have gone through the difficult and arduous process of actually conserving land, about what would have to be done. It was a long shot in the first place, but I did call Mark Younger last year, I'm sorry, I don't exactly remember when, to feel him out on the prospect of conserving this land. And he was adamant. I mean, he had figures in his head that were unrealistic for conservation purposes. You know, because it's a process. You have to get a lot of organizations on board. There's, he wanted a lot of earnest money, you know, right from the start. That's very difficult to provide if you're trying to do a conservation effort through some of these organizations. In the end, the seller has to work with the buyer to conserve land. It really can't be, you know, there can't be a lot of animosity there or distrust. And our assessment, my assessment, I should say, at the end of the day, was that it wasn't going to work. There's too much money, too much animosity, and however appealing the land was, as Jesse pointed out, the road was already in, a lot of the damage had already been done, and now I'm in a butter as well. You know, that land is, the forest there is gone, for the most part. So at this point, there's very little, I guess the point is that it would take a long time to restore that land. So in answer to your question, Gail, the Conservation Commission, or, I don't know that that was really, that wasn't really an official, I should clarify. I was feeling him out with the idea that if it seemed feasible, we might get involved. It never got to the point of us officially getting involved.
Thank you. Anyone else who hasn't spoken for a first time who would like to weigh in or ask a question? Okay, then I will call on Beverly. Did you still want to talk about this again? Okay. So next to Jody, Chris Olson. Yep, there's your mic.
Excuse me, Chris Olson. I appreciate all of the comments and things that everyone has said so far, and I'm not personally sensing a lot of persuasion happening, and I would like to move that we call the question, please.
Okay. Chris is calling the question. There is a second. Let me make sure I haven't forgotten how this works. There's no debate. Two-thirds of you must vote in order to call the question, which means debate ceases and we go right to voting. So an "I" vote right now, no debate on this, calling the question. An "I" vote means we stop talking about it and we vote. A "no" vote means we're going to keep, we can keep talking if we choose. So all those in favor of calling the question, ceasing debate, going right to voting, signify by saying "I."
Aye.
All opposed, say "no."
No.
Okay, I think we have surpassed the two-thirds majority, so I'm going to say the "ayes" have it. The "ayes" appear to have it. Pause. The "ayes" have it, and so the question is now to the vote. So I'm going to read this again. "The motion on the floor is to advise the Select Board of the body's wish to create a new town forest. The Select Board offers Mark Younger the appraised price of $313,000 for his 68 acres on Middle Road. This offer should be conditioned on the next two steps, those being if he accepts, the Select Board should apply to the state, the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board, for $150,000 toward that purchase price. The Select Board should let the neighbors who have donated and spent about $3,500 for this effort help write and submit the application. The application should include a request to VHCB to steward the land for free, and the Select Board should offer to have volunteers appointed by the Select Board help with stewardship. And finally, if the state approves the VHCB funding, the Select Board should call a special town meeting to approve a 22-year municipal bond for the rest of the funding needed to buy this land. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying "I."
Aye.
All opposed, say "no."
No.
The "noes" appear to have it. The "noes" do have it. We're back to Article 11. I see Lynn Levine's hand.
Yes, this is Lynn Levine, and I have a non-binding proposal that goes, motion, that says, "The voters in Dummerston call for an immediate and durable peace in Gaza."
The voters, do you have a copy of that for us, Lynn? You said you sent this to me, and I did not see it, and I still don't. Okay, can you, thank you, yeah. Do you feel like you got that? Oh, yep. "The voters in Dummerston call for an immediate and durable peace in Gaza." Is there a second? Mary Ann? Mary Ellen, I'm sorry, Mary Ellen, seconds the motion. So this would be a non-binding resolution, just saying that the voters in Dummerston wish to pass this. And so, will you explain this, Lynn? You don't have a mic anymore. Can you get back to it? Mic runners, can we give Lynn a mic?
So how, can you hear me okay?
Yep, keep her right in front of your mouth, and you're good.
Yep. "We are feeling overwhelmed by what is going on in Gaza and need to speak up in any way possible. This resolution is, of course, non-binding, but a chance to make a statement from the one and only Dummerston in the world."
Are there questions, comments, concerns? "The voters call for an immediate and durable peace in Gaza." Seeing no hands, are you ready for the question? The motion is that the voters of Dummerston call for an immediate and durable peace in Gaza. All in favor, indicate by saying "I."
Aye.
All opposed, say "no." The "ayes" appear to have it. The "ayes" do have it, and you have made your sentiments known. Okay, is there anything else under Article 11, other business? Yes, I see Bess in the back. We get a microphone there.
I'm Bess Richardson, and I want to thank Dummerston Cares and the Dummerston Fire Department for their, for their fire, smoke alarm program that they have going, where you sign up, they show up, put up your smoke alarm, and they disappear. And it's a very good program, and I think that they take their time on the weekend, and they'll call you, they'll plan with you to come in when you want them, and they're very good. They also have CO detectors as well. So I thought somebody was here today that was going to be having people sign up, but if not, call the fire department.
Okay.
And see what you can do.
I think Bill Schmidt will speak more to that. Gretchen, can you bring the mic up to Bill, who's standing?
Bill Schmidt, can you hear me? And thank you for your, thank you to Dummerston Cares and the Fire Department. I'm on the board of the, of Dummerston Cares, and we are really pleased by the way this particular program is going. It started last fall. Cares partnered with the Fire Department, and to date, there are 102 smoke alarms and 29 carbon dioxide detectors in more than 43 homes at no charge to the homeowner. There are about nine or 10 more to be installed, hopefully this month, and this is Phase One of the project. It will be continuing. And if any of you are interested in having smoke alarms, fire CO, CD2 detectors in your home, see me after the meeting. I've got some applications here, and we can go forward. The Fire Department's enthusiastic about the program, Dummerston Cares is, and we want to make sure that this Raise the Alarm Fire Safety Program enables every home in town to be as safe fire protection-wise as possible. I'd also like to thank everyone for the support of the $750 in the budget for Cares Message Line. The Message Line is the, one of the main ways that people can access Cares services and programs. And on programs, I'll just mention this too as a last point, we're putting together now two new exercise programs that we're hoping to see start in May. One will be a Tai Chi class, gentle Tai Chi, and the other will be a yoga class. And we're also working on having an almost monthly walking program, May through October. All of these new programs will be announced in the Spring Views, which will come out in May. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. And Gretchen, right there, can you raise your hand again, please?
I just wanted to speak to this wonderful smoke alarm program. We got ours Saturday, and one thing they didn't mention was, they have 10-year batteries. So you don't have to do a thing for 10 years. I hope I'll be alive then. And then we also got our carbon monoxide, which I had never really understood how that all worked. We have that too, and I just wanted to say, it's really a great program. I hope everybody will join that.
Great. I saw a hand over here, Paul.
Paul Normandow. I just wanted to, I hadn't heard anybody say anything about the town report being dedicated to two wonderful citizens in town, Ruth Barton and Lester Dunkley, and I think they're, I think they're, they were two well-deserved recognitions. So I just wanted to bring that forth here, and I think everybody owes them a great deal of gratitude.
We did, but I'm happy to say it again. And Jody? Jody, we use the mic. It's right behind you, please.
Seeing as Christina Naylor isn't here, maybe Julianne can fill me in with the date of the Wyndham Southeast Supervised Reunion Budget Meeting.
It is March 19th at 7:00 p.m.
March, March 19th at 7:00 p.m. at the gym in the high school. Thank you. So if you really want to talk about budgets and your taxes, you might want to at least come in here where it's all going. Thank you.
Phoebe, right back there.
Hi, I'm Jessica Nelson, and I'd like to make a motion that we get an update about Dummerston School. I'd like to make a motion that we receive an update about Dummerston School.
I won't accept that as a motion, but if Julianne would like to give us an update on the Dummerston School, that'd be fine.
Thank you. I have, I would love to do that, and I would love to just share about the beautiful children who attend this school. You've seen running the microphone here. Actually, I have a few slides, because I do want to show you some images. So we can set that up, and if there's anybody else who has other business, I can get that set up.
Okay. And back there, Gretchen?
Hi, Christine Gett from the Conservation Commission. I had a little speech prepared, and I'm mentally thinking about how to make it really short. I know we've been here forever. This is a pitch for the Conservation Commission. John Anderson, who's been on the Commission for 18 years, is stepping down this summer. He's been amazing, but we are now in the market for new members. So if you have any interest in conservation issues, please contact me, get on our website, talk to someone at the town office, or there's a signup sheet out front. We also have a monthly newsletter that you might enjoy that has nature notes specific to this area and events that are coming up. We sponsor, we sponsor a lot of talks and presentations over at the community center, and it's a really fun group. We laugh a lot. We have sort of refugees from more contentious places that have joined us over the years, and we have a good time. We're very respectful of each other, and I think we do really good work. The only other thing I would add is, if you have something that's near and dear to your heart, it might be a really good place to do it. You know, we have people that only kind of work one side of things. If you have a passion, you know, like, you want to build owl houses, or you want to lead a walk, or you like to pull buckthorn, or whatever it is that you like to do, you can just do that. You know, it's a very flexible situation, and we do a lot of good for the town. So that's it.
Anyone else? Okay, Julienne, are you ready?
It's your turn, you're on. Yep.
Thank you so much. I asked the Select Board, gosh, reached out to Lori and connected with the Select Board about having just a few more minutes today than normal to talk to people about Dummerston School because it has been so long since we've had an in-person meeting. And I also know that people are just accustomed to hearing about Dummerston School when you come to town meeting. We've had the merger, and so things are a little bit different in terms of how we update on Dummerston School. So I just wanted to show you a little bit about what happens here in our programming. I do get asked a lot of questions about it. And I want to just give people some information about how you can find out more and how welcome you are here at our school. So my name is Julienne Egan, I am the Dummerston School Principal. This is my 21st year in education. I came to the district in the last century as an English and Social Studies teacher. I taught at BUHS, I taught at BAMs. I was curriculum coordinator for the district for a couple of years, and this is my fifth year at Dummerston. You may know me because I taught your children, perhaps, at the high school or at the middle school in Brattleboro. So I would like to just give you a little visual of Dummerston. We have 154 students here, pre-K to 8, ages 4 to 14. We have an early learning center down on that end of the building, which is completely set up for the young learner, 4 and 5-year-olds. Please, today, I'm, it's such a shame it's raining, but sometime come and take a walk around the grounds so you can see how we've designed the early learning center to match the needs of the young learner. This is our elementary wing here, grades 1 to 4. We also have an intensive services program that is a district program for students with intensive needs. And we, of course, have the middle school, which is grades 5 to 8. So that is how our school is laid out. We have daily opportunities for students to learn and play on our beautiful campus. We have a forest trail, outdoor classrooms, student tended gardens, soccer and baseball fields, play structures. Students participate in visual arts, library and media, tech instruction, instrumental music, general music, chorus, sports, physical education, those are all core experiences here at Dummerston School. So that's probably the biggest change at Dummerston over the last few years that you might see if you came to visit as compared to previous years. COVID forced us to go outside, and we did it in a big way. So that's actually was awesome. Our core values here, what do we believe? You know, at this school, we're a pre-K to 8 school with one class per grade. The beauty of a small school is that we can embrace all of the individuals here to learn in an environment that prioritizes relationship building, autonomy, play, challenging opportunities for learning, and safety. We have very high standards for learning, of course, where we believe that developing critical skills in communication, leadership, conflict resolution, and deep understanding of self, others, and the world are why we're here at school. And so we love learning together, and we take joy in it. I'm going to skip that because if you go to board meetings, you'll learn a little bit about how we meet the needs of very diverse learners. If any of you follow education, if you've been following the board meetings for the district, you know that we have diverse learners, learners at Dummerston School. We have diverse learners everywhere. And in my opinion, and my understanding, we always have, we always have had very diverse learners in our schools. We did when I was in school, we did, we do today. The difference is today as schools, we understand a lot more about how children learn and how to best support them in their learning. And so we set up our staff in order to make sure that all our students learn, all our students make progress. Core programming is more than just social studies, science, you know, reading, math. It is also the art program we have here, physical education, nature-based learning, personal development, winter sports, and more. So you can see here, I'm just going to show you the, some of the beautiful images, and I'm going to put this slideshow on our website. But we have our Spring Arts Night here, the visual arts are with Mr. Ferguson are incredible. Recent field trip to the Brattleboro Museum and Art Center. Band, band is back in a big way. Can you believe there was like no band during COVID because you weren't allowed to play an instrument? And we went from like seven students who stuck it out to now we have like 30 students in band. So it's amazing. We have general music and chorus. Here we are, oh my gosh, second year of winter sports, that came back too. Kids at the rink, kids at Mount Snow. We have students in the adaptive program at Mount Snow, so all students participate in winter sports. We collaborate with the Southern Vermont Natural History Museum and run programming out in the woods, nature-based learning. It's amazing. These kids are awesome. We have farm-to-school, nature-based learning, and outdoor play happening every day at Dummerston School. Here are some garden beds. Walker Farm donated funds so that we could expand our garden not only to over at the ELC side, but it's actually now on the main playground so kids can play at recess and eat, and graze, and tend gardens. Here we are at a neighbor's property. Thank you, neighbors, for letting us cross your property. Talking about wetlands, oh my gosh, our students go out into neighbor's property to explore vernal pools. So cool. Here's Mike from Southern Vermont Natural History Museum. So these kids are learning about Dummerston and, you know, really the legacy of Dummerston in terms of the natural wildlife out there. We use a social-emotional-academic framework called developmental designs. Again, I'll post this on our website so you can check it out. But it is a framework that gives us common language and opportunities for how we work together as a community. We build our own social contract every year. The kids make this, it's up on the wall. So every year, the kids make their own social contract, they all sign off on it. This year, it's be inclusive, work together, be safe. Here we are at an all-school meeting with the winter solstice theme. Mr. Marshall pretending to be the earth, tilting. There's the sun. Here's another all-school meeting. All-school meetings are fun. You are welcome to visit if you'd like to attend one. They're a great time. Students work together in multi-age groups with a buddy classroom. We believe all students are leaders at Dummerston School. It's a pre-K to 8 school. The pre-K students are leaders, and the 8th grade students are leaders, and they work together on various projects. Here's some 8th grade students who worked with one of the Afghan muralists, the art lords who talked to our students about her experience in Afghanistan and then supported them in making their own mural here at Dummerston School. Students lead their families through conferences. They actually talk about their learning, what they've gained, and they lead the show. We celebrate Black Lives Matter at School Week just last month. Pre-K to 8, everybody thinks about what something like loving engagement means. Here's an 8th grade version of what it means to be unapologetically black. Here's a pre-K version of what loving engagement means, which are principles of Black Lives Matter. These students organized a pride parade. This is their second year that they did that. We offer middle school sports. Robust middle school sports program, basketball, soccer, after-school clubs, ultimate frisbee, theater, chess, ASL, cooking, garden, art, and jazz bands. You are welcome to engage with us here at Dummerston School in our family and community events. We had a family contra dance last year, we're going to have one this year as well, family movie night, family pumpkin walk night. We have enjoyed collaborating with the West Dummerston Fire Department, Rescue, Inc., the Sheriff's Department, here at school. And just to wrap up, this is like speed version. I could be here for hours, but this is speed version. Our physical learning environment, right? You know, when you think about what does it take for Dummerston School to be the school it is? It's the staff, of course, it's the amazing students, and it's our learning environment, right? The campus, the facilities. Thanks to COVID-related funds, Thompson Trust Grant Funds, local budget funds, in-kind support, and your donations, we really have gone through a transformation over the last few years. And so if you walk around, you will see lots of, you know, lots of elements that didn't, that just came to be over the last few years. One of the silver linings of COVID because there was, there was funds to do this, and there was also community support for it. So I want to sincerely thank everyone who contributed to these projects. I will tell you, they have transformed how we occupy this space. They have transformed our lives here at Dummerston School. Like, I can't, I just want to say, I can't say enough to you about your support and the difference this has made every day. You know, we have new elements, new ways for students to engage in their outdoor community. It is a wonder to see. And we're not done yet. We have some projects coming up. So you'll have an opportunity to come Friday night if you'd like and play bingo to support next steps. We have actually installed the wood pellet boiler, so we have now a wood-fired locally sourced system. Major upgrades to our HVAC control systems to improve energy efficiency, lighting upgrades, flooring upgrades, paving, renovations. So thank you, everybody, for all of that. And I will just say, I'm skipping to just, the last thing I would like to say is, please visit and volunteer. Reach out to me if you'd like to arrange a time to come in, take a tour. We need volunteers. We could definitely, you know, we need volunteers, people who want to mentor young people, people who want to come in and be guest speakers about an expertise you might have, after-school club leaders, substitute teachers, come on in. We want to see you. COVID times was like, everybody stay away, right? Like, don't come in here. That's, come on in. Come in. We, we want to see you. So thank you.
You've got a great school. Thanks for your leadership, Julienne. I see Christina's hand. Do we have a mic runner still? Thanks, Gretchen. Across the room.
I got it, Gretchen. Thank you, Julienne. I'm Christina Naylor, and I just want to, thank you, Jody. I had to run my husband back to work. But I just want to let people know that the, that the budget vote will be on Tuesday, March 19th at 7:00 p.m. for the school budget. This is the merged district school budget. I have been serving for the last three years on the Independent Budget Review Committee, which is in a member from each town that reviews the budget and writes about a, we shoot for an eight-page report, but we are probably going to be at about 10 to 12 pages this year. We do not have it available now because the legislature changed how your tax calculation is done about two weeks ago. So this report that is in the back has a tax rate in it that could be the number, so could many other numbers. So if you are interested in what your tax rate is going to be, we hope to release a report that will be closer to the tax number in the week before the March 19th budget vote. I have been serving as the Dummerston appointee. This nomination is done from the floor at the WSD, SESD Annual Meeting. I am happy to continue serving. I am happy to fully support somebody else who would like to do it. And we like to say on that committee, we put the fun in education funding. So if anybody is interested in that role, please let me know, and I will be happy to nominate you from the floor at the WSESD Annual Meeting. And we, that is where that position would be nominated. If there's people that would like to hear more about it, I am available. Come see me at the end of the meeting, and I will give you some contact info.
Thank you. Roger?
May I ask Christina a question?
Sure.
Christina, as someone who was on the school board before it became the Unified School District, do you have any observations about how this has actually played out for Dummerston School?
I think in change, it's always a challenge. And I think one of the large challenges is, I felt this in my time on the school board and I, on the merged board, thank you, Ruth Barton. In the year that I spent there, a lot of the energy and time is spent on the high school. Whereas the high school had its own independent board, you know, prior to merger, the problems that happen with high school students are often ones that require lawyers, that require a lot of time. And they are sort of a last-gasps measure. And I feel that it's very hard for the board to put the same time and attention to the elementary schools. And I think that's felt around the district. It's been somewhat good for our tax rate, I think, although prior to merger, we were about the 20th highest spending district. And the merged district is now the 10th highest spending district on a per pupil basis. So, I mean, I think that's just, those are just the numbers. So I, I don't think we're seeing huge savings. But it's been a heck of a last four years, too, for education. So, you know, I think there's, there's definitely pluses to merging, but in terms of how it affects Dummerston, I think that's something that I hear from a lot of people about the concerns. You know, luckily, we have a fabulous principal, and we have a really great leadership council. So I think that is the method in which the board can hear from the school, and we can sort of change that attention. And I think the board is very frustrated by that and very interested in making that switch. So that's the good news, is, it's, these things take time to really work out.
Does anyone else have anything they'd like to bring up under other business? Well, I would like to thank Larry and the Grange for great lunch. There are lots of there are lots of leftover desserts. I'd like to thank our mic runners. They have had a long day. Phoebe, Gretchen, and Mabel. Sounds like Roger has a something to add. You state your name and stand.
Roger Turner. Can I ask for us to get permission to somebody who's not a member of a town, of the town, but who works here at the school to say something about?
Yes, but first I want to thank him. He's next on my list. I want to thank Dan, the facilities manager, and our tech guy today. There were plenty of quirks, and he went along with it. So if there's no objection, we'll allow this person who works in our school but doesn't live in our town to speak.
Thank you very much. I just want to address this very quickly because there are lots of questions about how the merged district has affected the school. And I want everyone to realize, Dummerston School is still your school. From a financial standpoint, Dummerston School has benefited greatly from the merged district. We have been able to do capital projects without having to go through bonding, not having to do one bond vote for a lot of the projects. I don't have the exact numbers, but putting in a new wood-fired boiler system was close to half a million dollars. That was paid for through grant funding, through Wyndhamwood Heat initiatives from Efficiency Vermont, and from the district's capital fund. Efficiency Vermont, and from the district's capital fund. You did not have to float a bond for any of that. We have had more work done in the school within the last four years than had been done for a while because we had the funds available. The district, Frank Rucker, the financial manager in town, has been great at securing funds and getting ahead of the curve as far as getting money in place for us. So we are positioned very, very well in the upcoming years to address capital funding issues with a very limited amount of impact to your local tax rate. And so a lot of credit needs to go to him for that. And also, we have benefited a great deal from this. We have probably put in the last four years, I would say around maybe a million, million and a half dollars worth of capital improvements in the schools, which did not have to be burdened directly to the taxpayers. So that's what I wanted to say, and thank you very much. And remember, this is your school. We have 20 acres of community property for you to utilize, so don't hesitate. Let us know. Okay? Thank you.
Christina?
Thank you, Dan. And it has been very helpful for our tax rate, and I just, I want to reiterate, Frank has been excellent at utilizing our ESER funding, which is ARPA for schools. There's been millions of dollars coming into the schools, and a lot of those have been devoted to federal projects. And so Dummerston has surely gotten their fair share of the federal dollars for making improvements on our school, as have all the other schools in the district. And Frank has done a really good job making sure we get all of our share of those ESER funds used. I mean, millions and millions of dollars. It's a little painful now because that money is gone, so, but it was used well, and it was used a lot on capital projects.
Paul Normandow? Phoebe?
Another question for Christina. Will your finance report summary, can that be made available to the town clerk to put on our Dummerston website? Thank you.
Is there any other business under Article 11? Ruth, up front here.
As the hour is getting late.
You're on, Ruth. Just state your name.
Ruth Barton. As the hour is getting late and we're all summoned from lunch, I move adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
I see a number of seconds. This is going to be non-debatable. All in favor of adjourning our town meeting of 2024 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I dare you to say no. The ayes have it. Have a wonderful year.